Good morning, everyone. We're going to call this meeting to order here at 9 o'clock for the September 13th, 2022 Regular Board Supervisors Meeting. And as customary, we'll start off with our moment of silence. And go ahead, Jessica.
Well, yesterday was the 7th anniversary of the Valley Fire, which changed our lives forever and so many of our constituents. And I know it's a difficult day for everybody. And it's, you know, a time that we can just reflect on what we've been through together, but also how much we've grown and the changes that we've made and the collaborations and the partnerships and how the community has really embraced each other. I think that's really worth, that's one of the biggest things for me when I reflect on that.
Do you have one?
Yeah, I just want to add on to the, you know, the devastating fires that have happened since. But we did lose lives in that fire. And I want to go out to those families, have a moment of silence for them. I know we lost, you know, a lot of folks lost homes and other things, but we had community members that lost their lives during that fire. So also want to dedicate that.
And just briefly, I'll add that Sunday was 9/11 and the anniversary for that, from that day. That's, so I'll add that as a moment of silence as well. Rob Howe, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, its stand as one nation, indivisible, with liberty and interest overall.
Thank you for that. All right. Consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Do we have any of those? I don't think we would need four anyhow, right? So with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. It looks like we have to pull 5.1 for discussion, so we'll take that up at a later time. Is there any others that any supervisors would like to pull for now? And also, I'll open it up to the public. If there's anyone that would like to pull something from the consent agenda. Don't see anybody in the chambers, and I'm looking online. I will bring it back to the board for action.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda items 5.2 through 5.18.
Second. So I have a motion in the second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'm just going to add, I think we're not having a pet of the week. Going to have public input. I was almost going to say that. Why would I say that? So we won't have a pet of the week, but we will have public input, but I still need two minutes for that. So maybe, do you think 5.1 will be quick?
Yes.
Okay, so what I'll do is we'll open up 5.1. Waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Policy and Procedures, Section 4, Consultation Selection, Subsection 4.1.4. And B, appoint Dr. Carl A. Sporer as Public Health Officer. And C, approve professional services contract for a term of six months for an amount not to exceed $6,000 a month for the term of the agreement and authorize the chair to sign. And so I'll leave the floor to you, CAO.
Yes. Thank you, Chair. For this, we need to change the term of the contract to today's date. As you may recall, I had pulled this item at the last meeting on August 30th and failed to change the enactment date, effective date.
Okay. Any questions? Anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item? I'll look online. I don't see any hands up, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Having trouble pulling mine up here.
I got it pulled up.
So you just waived the?
Yeah. Wait, Mr. Chair, or, yeah, we wait.
Motion to waive.
Motion to waive. Wav the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Policy and Procedures, Section 4, Consultant Selection, Subsection 4.1.4.1.4.
Second.
So I have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then B.
Yeah. And I move that we appoint Dr. Carl A. Sporer as Public Health Officer.
And the other one, too?
Oh, together. And approve professional services contract for a term of six months for an amount not to exceed $6,000 per month for the term of the agreement and authorize the chair to sign.
As amended.
Oh, as amended. Sorry.
There we go.
Second.
So I have a motion to end the second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. All right, so we are at 9:06, which means we are at public input. Public input, we will allow anyone to come up and speak about an item that is not covered on the agenda, and we'll give you three minutes in doing so. And just so you know, we will not be able to give input when it comes to these items. So because they're not covered on the agenda, that's just, we either bring it to a later date or direct you to the person that can take care of it. So is there anyone in the public or in the chambers that would like to speak on public input? All right, so looking online, I don't see any hands either. So I will close this item, public input for now, or actually, I'll close it for good. And we'll move on to our 9:07 and move on to Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Month of September 2022 as Literacy Awareness Month. And Supervisor Vice Chair Pyska will be presenting this proclamation.
So the Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California proclamation designating the month of September 2022 as literary awareness month, literacy awareness month. Whereas, our country's greatest resource is its people, and it is the best, it is in the best interest of our society to help increase the literacy levels of all of its citizens. And whereas, the growth and stability of our county are significantly affected by our citizens' ability to read and write. Whereas, more than 43 million adults in the United States cannot read or write above a third grade level, and 43% of adults with the lowest literacy levels live in poverty. And whereas, since 1987, the Lake County Library Adult Literacy Program has worked with over 1,000 volunteer tutors and 2,000 adult learners, increasing the literacy levels of county residents by offering free one-on-one tutoring for adults to improve basic reading, writing, and comprehension skills. And whereas, the Lake County Library Family Literacy Program provides adult learners with books and activities so they can read to and along with their children, thus breaking the cycle of low literacy to help create lifelong learners and family bonding. And whereas, improving literacy skills helps adult learners build confidence so they may access better jobs, higher wages, further their education, advocate for their children, and overall improve their way of life. Now therefore be it wholeheartedly proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby proclaim the month of September 2022 as Literacy Awareness Month in recognition of the many volunteers, tutors, and adult learners whose efforts continue to improve the literacy skills of Lake County residents. Passed and adopted this 13th day of September 2022, signed by the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you so much for this proclamation. Literacy is an integral part of our mission at the library to promote reading and lifelong learning in our community. And I would like to give an opportunity for our excellent adult literacy coordinator, Georgina Marie Gordato, to speak.
Morning, everyone. Thank you, supervisors, for proclamating us for this month. I do want to give a big thank you to two of our members of the literacy coalition who are here today representing as the program coordinator. I'm also the Lake County Poet Laureate. It's really an honor to be able to promote literacy with adult learners in this county. So I just call upon the Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, and our community to help encourage literacy improvement here in the county. And if you're interested in tutoring or if you need services, contact any of the library branches. And I'll pass it over to Deb, our literacy coalition president.
On behalf of the Lake County Literacy Coalition, I just wanted to thank the Board of Supervisors for recognizing this month as National Literacy Awareness. And we hope that you will also support the fundraising efforts that we will be doing in the coming year to support the literacy programs. Thank you very much.
Did you want to speak?
Well, thank you so much. How many tutors do you have for your adult literacy program?
So currently, we have 12.
Sorry. So currently, we have 12. We have an active waiting list of learners, so we're always recruiting. Basically, you'd contact the library, let them know you're interested, they'll route you to me. And then we do ongoing trainings, we do one-on-one tutoring on a weekly basis. It's a pretty flexible program. You don't have to have any experience. We'll do all of your training for you.
Thank you. And here's your proclamation. Oh, yes. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak about this? I'm looking on Zoom as well, and I don't see any hands up, so I'll go ahead and close this item, and thank you for that proclamation. We'll move on to our 6.4, which is Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Month of September 2022 as National Recovery Month in Lake County. And I'll come and read this proclamation. Good morning. Are you here on the side? So I want to start out with saying I'm really glad we're doing this proclamation, and I'll share a little bit about it. One of the things I hold very dearly to my heart is that my mother, who I lost in February, had been actively seeking her recovery and was doing really good. Unfortunately, COVID, you know, took her, but at the same time, my blessing, and I'm sure other people have these blessings as well, is to see your family recover. I have a lot of other family members and friends who are going through recovery, so this is so important, and I'm glad we're doing this. So I'll go ahead and read this proclamation. Whereas, well, proclamation designating the month of September 2022 as National Recovery Month in Lake County. And it's whereas, Recovery Month recognizes the strong and proud recovery community and the dedication of service providers and community members in Lake County who assist and support individuals from prevention services to recovery. Whereas, the Lake County Behavioral Health Services provided substance use disorder services to 179 participants. Hilltop Recovery Services provided 195 residential treatment beds and 52 outpatient services. Redwood Community Services, Chulie House, provided residential treatment services to 46 women and 26 children. Healthy Opportunities for Mothering Experiences Home, Hilltop Recovery Services and Fran's House, Sober Living Environment, SLE, provided combined safe housing to 34 men and women and 19 children in the calendar year 2021. And whereas, Lake County Behavioral Health Services provided mental health services to 1,229 individuals during the calendar year 2021. And whereas, nationally, 21 million people in the U.S. experience a substance use disorder while 9.5 million experience both substance use disorder and mental health disorders. And whereas, through promotion of Recovery Month, people from all walks of life are encouraged to become knowledgeable about what they can do to create a healthier tomorrow for themselves and others by helping to prevent these problems today. Whereas, recovery is possible and treatment is effective, people in recovery can and do become gainfully employed, own homes, and rejoin their families and their communities. The challenge is to bring that treatment to all who need it, and there are many such people in our community. Whereas, the County of Lake Board of Supervisors and Lake County Behavioral Health Substance Use Disorder Services, Mental Health Services, Hilltop Recovery Services, Redwood Community Services, SafeRx, Hope Rising, and Lake County Health Services urges all citizens, families, governmental agencies, public and private institutions, business, healthcare, education systems, and Lake County to support efforts that will increase community awareness, understanding, and action to address substance use disorder and mental health conditions in our community. Now therefore be it wholeheartedly proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of Lake County joins the Lake County Department of Behavioral Health Services to hereby proclaim that September 2022 is National Recovery Month in the Lake County, in the County of Lake, sorry. Passed and adopted this 13th day of September 2022. And so.
So, thank you, Chairman. April Gamberth, Lake County Behavioral Health Services. I am the newly promoted Deputy Director of Substance Use Disorder Services and Mental Health Services. So I have a renewed dedication to serving our community in the capacity of increasing overall health and wellness. And I thank the chairman and the board for recognizing this month as Recovery Month. But I would also like to say that in our proclamation, it did not call out all of our providers, and unfortunately, that would list would be quite long. But I would like to take an opportunity at this moment to just say thank you to tribal health and other community partners who have recently worked very closely with our department, very closely. We are increasing collaboration, which, as all of us know, is essential in providing whole-person care. And so my only hope is that moving forward, we can continue to grow and strengthen ourselves. So we have, for the first time in a few years, a larger turnout than normal, so I'm not going to continue to go on. I'm going to pass this over to Amber Westfall, our Substance Use Program Manager.
Hi, thank you, everybody. I wrote down a few words. I wanted to make sure that I was able to get my message across. I get a little nervous speaking in front of people, so sometimes I just have to put my thoughts on paper. So thank you to the board. Thank you Supervisor Crandall for recognizing this month as National Recovery Month. I just want to say that, like, as April pointed out, Lake County Behavioral Health is only one piece of the recovery community. We have so many different pieces, different communities that provide support and recovery. I just want to say millions of people experience substance use disorders and other behavioral health conditions daily. Many of us, many of us are close to someone, if not experiencing ourself, someone working, we are close to someone, if not experiencing ourself, someone working to overcome addictions. In honoring all on the road to recovery, we highlight this month and remain committed to preventing substance use disorders, supporting those who are still struggling, and providing resources needed so we can all live full and healthy lives. When we help others recover, our community gets stronger and more resilient. For rural, underserved, and tribal communities, obstacles for treatment and recovery are amplified. Let us consider the work that we still need to do, and let's consider the importance of changing our conversations and eliminating stigma associated with addiction in those who are in recovery. Overcoming substance use disorder and other behavioral health conditions is already hard as it is. Let us remember there is no wrong way to recover or to access services. This Recovery Month and every day, I want to thank our peer support specialists who work in the community, all these self-help groups that work and help those in recovery, our prevention specialists who work towards preventing substance use disorders from occurring, all of our counselors, our healthcare professionals, our MAP providers, all of our treatment providers and organizations in the community, our culturally focused supports, our faith-based supports, our first responders, and our law enforcement and judicial partners. Everybody has a part, whether you feel that you're recognized or not. We all have, we're all a piece to the puzzle of the recovery community, and I want to make sure to thank everybody. You are recognized, and you are honored, and thanks for all that you do. Would anybody else like to say a few words? All right.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Ray. I work at the Scotts Valley Bandito Indians Association that we have here in Lake County. I just wanted to say we have, in our community, people stepping up and getting recovery. And I'm kind of nervous, too. That's all I have to thank you. They don't, this is the first time I've been around these ladies, so they've sent out invitations for me to come. And I just came today, and this is kind of unexpected.
We're glad you came. Thank you, Jennifer. Yep.
Hi, my name is Lori McAllen. I represent Lake County Tribal Health, and I just want to recognize all the support that we are given, and working with Lake County has been warming. So thank you.
You want me to announce the event for you? And so the recovery happens, September is National Recovery Month, and this is going to take place on September 24th, 2022, at 11:00 a.m., Austin Park, Clear Lake, California. And so is there anything else I should add? There's a website on this form, and is there somewhere, so we could just post this on the website or something like that? So, okay, so September 24th, be there, 11:00 a.m. All right. Sam's going to make us take a picture here, so. Is there any other comments on that item on the agenda from the public? I don't see any hands up online, so it looks like we will close that item and move on to our 9:10. Consideration of Acceptance of the June 30th, 2022 Report of the Lake County Pooled Investments. And this is, I'll give this over to Susan as it says your name, and then I'll let you hand it over to, okay. Oh, Patrick, there you go.
Patrick Sullivan, County Tax Administrator. I'm here with Carlos Sablitas from Chandler and Barbara Ringan, our County Treasure Tax Collector. Chandler Asset Management is going to present a report on the county's investments. I can put the PDF up on the screen if I could have the sharing enabled by the host. So go ahead, Carlos, and you can tell me where you want me to go.
Absolutely. Good morning, everybody. Good morning, supervisors. Let's, why don't we skip page three, which has all the text that you can read on your own? I'm going to keep this very conversational, and perhaps we can go to page number five. And I want to focus on the chart on the right-hand side. I think I've come in here for the past three quarters, and I've updated you on this, and I've focused on this very topic. We have very high inflation in the United States right now. I don't think that's news to anybody. You see it when you drive your car and go to the gas station and fill up your tank, paying for food. You're probably paying 20, you know, prices are much higher than they were a year ago. Those inflationary pressures, which were caused as a result of a quick reopening of the economy, plus record stimulus from the government, plus low interest rates, which made it very cheap for businesses and people to borrow money, all these things increased the money supply, and we have inflationary pressures in the United States. The reason I'm focusing on this is because those inflationary, the inflation numbers that you're looking at on this page here are driving interest rates in the markets, and those interest rates move around both the value of your existing investments as well as the future earnings that you will have in the portfolio. So I want to talk about those from an economic perspective. We'll keep it very brief and high level, and then we'll move on to what's happened in the portfolio. So all good news, everything is fine, but I do want to highlight some things that we've got our eyes on. So I mentioned that inflation numbers are higher, and the reasons for that, the month of June saw 9.1% inflation year over year as measured by the Consumer Price Index, which is an index that most businesses look at and use. That number came down for the month of July, down to 8.5%. And this very morning, as I was driving up here, the number for August was released. It came in at 8.1, 8.3, which was higher than the anticipated 8.1. For that reason, the stock markets at this very moment are actually losing value. You're seeing the numbers come down considerably, and there's quite a, if you can Google it and just see what's happening in the news, pull up the newspaper, and you'll see that the stock markets are witnessing a lot of volatility this morning as a result of it. Investors were expecting that the Fed's measures to combat inflation, the Federal Reserve, that's our central bank, would be more effective at this stage, but they haven't been. They still have more work to do. It's also leading most investors to believe that the Federal Reserve will raise interest rates for another time. It would be the fourth time this year, this calendar year. And every time they've done, they've done it at a three-quarters of a percent clip every time, which is considerable. So if we flip over, Patrick, to page number 11, I think it's helpful to look at the chart on the right-hand side. It's the Fed funds, the effective Fed federal funds rate. That's the overnight lending rate between banks. The Federal Reserve manipulates that rate by setting a target for it, and then they do something called open market operations to move it around. But basically, they're moving around the cost for banks to borrow from one another on an overnight basis, and this sets the tone for short-term rates and also longer-term rates. So that hike in interest rates that you're seeing is their attempts to slow down the economy by making it more expensive for businesses to borrow money, for investors to borrow money. And as a result, it's more expensive. It pushes people out of borrowing, and it has less liquidity. They have less access to money, which should hopefully pull buyers away. If you think about perhaps like the housing market, that's a really good example. If mortgage rates go up, you have less people that are able to afford to buy that house, so they remove themselves from the market, and prices don't get pushed up as much. Well, the Fed is doing the same to the economy. They're raising rates so that businesses that can't afford to borrow at these higher rates are no longer expanding or spending money and pushing those inflation numbers up. That's just an economic term to say they're fighting inflation. They're trying to slow the economy down by fighting inflation. The net result of that is that it will, it will slow the economy down, and it could push us into a contraction where the economy actually shrinks rather than grows. We've had that, Patrick, if you back up one page to page number 10, you can see the table on the left-hand side. That's happened now for two quarters in a row. Some people are asking, does this mean that we're in a recession now? I'm just looking at the table on the left, the bottom row. You can see the March numbers, the economy shrank on an annualized basis 1.6%. And then in June, once again, at 60 basis points, six tenths of a percent. So investors are asking, is the Federal Reserve doing so much to slow the economy down to fight inflation that they are, are they pushing us into a recession? We're not quite sure if we're there yet. The normal definition of a recession is two back-to-back quarters that are negative, which we have, but there's more to it than that. One key measure that investors look at and economists look at is, is employment going down as well? Are we seeing a hike in unemployment? And employment is quite an opposite picture. We have very strong employment in the United States right now. We're creating jobs at an average over the last six jobs at an average over the last six months of somewhere around 375,000 jobs a month. Prior to COVID, we only needed about 140,000 to absorb new entrants into the labor markets, and we were creating much more than that. We're back to pre-COVID levels, is what I'm saying. So, that bright spot in the economy leads a lot of people to think that perhaps we're not quite yet in a recession, but they're keeping their eye on it. All right, what does it mean to you? Why the economics 101? The reason is because if you turn to page number 12, the chart on the left-hand side shows you the history of yields available in the markets for two-year investments, five-year, and 10-year investments. Remember, and these are measured by U.S. Treasury Bonds. These are, this is the U.S. government borrowing money so that they can do their activities, just like sometimes local governments borrow money to do what they need to do. So, this is their cost of being able to borrow that money, and that cost has been going up. If you look at the dotted purplish line at the bottom, that's the history of the yield for two-year Treasuries. So, that's the government borrowing money for a two-year term. And if you kind of eyeball December of 2021 for that rate, that rate was at 70 basis points, 0.7% is where it started the year. That's what it was costing the government. So, if you were an investor at that time and purchased a two-year bond, meaning you borrowed money from the U.S. government at that time, you were only going to earn 0.7% per year for the next year. That rate has hiked up to 3.5% through the end of last month, and as of this morning is at 3.76. That's a dramatic rise in a very, very short time. And that's a result because of inflationary pressures and the Federal Reserve's attempt to slow down the economy. Yields are much higher in the government, in the markets right now. Why is that important to you as a county and the county treasury? The reason that's important is because any new investments, you have bonds that you hold in your portfolio, and as those bonds mature, they will be reinvested. But rather than being invested at 0.7 at the beginning of the year, these bonds are not going to be reinvested somewhere in the range of 3.5, 3.7, 4% over that. So, you're going to see higher interest income coming into the treasury, and that's very good news. We haven't seen rates like these in about 12 years, 12, maybe 15 years. The inflation numbers that I showed you, we haven't seen numbers like that since the early Reagan era. So, I'm just trying to put things in perspective. So, this is very good news. This rise in rates is very, very good news. It means that your earnings, when I average out the annualized earnings rate that you earn on the portfolio, as bonds that with lower yields mature and leave the portfolio, and new bonds, they get replaced with new bonds with higher yields, the overall average yield is going up gradually, and I'll show you that in just a moment. Now, there is a flip side to this. The flip side, the cost to all of this, of course, is that as rates rise, the value of your bonds goes down. Whatever you're actually holding right now, that goes down, and it has gone down significantly because of the rise in rates. Now, does it matter? Yes, it always matters. In fact, your auditor controller will book that drop in value, even though it's a drop on paper, it's not going to get realized. You would only realize the loss if you sold the entire portfolio, which that's not a practice of the treasury, the treasury generally holds to maturity. But if you hold to maturity, you will not realize any of those losses. The losses just go away, you get your money back at maturity, when the bonds that you've purchased, the issuers of those bonds, pay you your principal back. So, the only concern is, what is the ability of those bond issuers to pay you your money back? The ability is very, very strong. That's one of the reasons you have a very strong investment program, you have a very robust investment policy, which sets parameters up to buy only very high credit quality issuers. You have an investment advisor who's doing credit work on the issuers that are in the portfolio. So, there's a lot of safety and liquidity and a lot of risk management going on. But that's, in essence, that's where we stand. Higher rates because of higher inflation, it's providing you a tailwind into earnings going into the future, but at the same time, the value on paper is dropping. You're not going to see that, you're not going to realize that value on, that drop in value on paper, you will not realize it. You'll see it in your financial statements, but money-wise, it's not going to hit a budget or anything like that. If anything, you should see the apportionments go up into the future. So, that's the backdrop, and I'll touch on the portfolio, but before I do that, let me take questions.
So, when we started meeting last summer, we were working on our strategy, and we chose the shorter-term investments when we were working together. And so, you've been slowly buying those over the year. And so, I just want to make sure that the rest of my board and the public understands, that was really good timing for us when we did that. And just, could you explain that so that everyone's aware?
Supervisor Paeska, you and I, and Supervisor Sabatia, and a number of other people, including your Treasury Tax Collector and the County Administrator's Office, we all sat in a committee where we reviewed the economy, and we forecast what we thought would happen in the economy. And one of the decisions that we made as a group during that time was that we would average, we would target an average maturity for this portfolio, and that average maturity was going to be shorter than what other counties and cities do. We kept it shorter on purpose. And the reason that we did that, the reason that all of us collectively, you included, made that decision, was because we anticipated that interest rates would rise, and we wanted to limit the negative impact, meaning that drop in value on paper, we wanted to limit that by staying a little shorter. The longer you are, the more of the impact. But also, functionally, the shorter the average maturity of the portfolio means that the faster bonds come due, which then become available to reinvest in increasingly higher yields. That was a very deliberate thing that we did, and we did that collectively, and indeed, it has worked out quite well. It's been a very good strategy.
Thanks.
Any other observations, comments, before I touch on the portfolio itself? Let's take a look at page number 14. We'll be very brief here. Again, this has been a collective work with your Treasury Tax Collector, it's been collective with members of the board, with the County Administrator's Office. This is, everybody's had a hand in this process to move it to where we are today. So, the portfolio is, I just want to remind everybody, the portfolio is designed for safety and liquidity. This is not a speculative portfolio. You cannot buy stocks, or real estate, or private equity, or commodities. You're not allowed to buy any of those things in these funds. These funds are invested in very high credit quality, interest-bearing debt securities, they're bonds, which effectively make you a lender, and you collect interest income on these securities. By law, you're not allowed to go out beyond five years, except with some special circumstances and permission from this board, but we don't do that as a policy. The primary goal is to generate interest income for the pool participants, and then, of course, for the county's money, so that you're able to earn something on your money while that money is held to be spent in all the activities of the county, like public works, like construction for roads, like salaries, like any initiatives that you have. So, that's the nature of the portfolio. Pages 15 and 16, I'll briefly touch upon. This is a summary of your investment policy, which currently complies with California Government Code. One of the reasons that you work with us is to ensure that the investments meet the letter of the law, and that you're, also, they meet the letter of your policy, and they do. This is a summary that we supply the treasury and the Treasury Tax Collector on a monthly basis. We oversee that as well. If we turn to page 17, this is a consolidation of your entire investment program. So, this encompasses, a portion of this is managed by Chandler Asset Management, and a portion of it is managed directly by the treasury, being held in, by your Treasury Tax Collector, being held in pools, county pools, excuse me, the state pool, Local Agency Investment Fund. You're the county pool. So, but basically, the investment decisions are made on a day-to-day basis, they're made by us, in line with a strategy that was given to us by the committee we worked with, and in line with a policy and state code. As of August 31st, so we were rushing to get the latest numbers, so this, that's as of 12, 13 days ago. The portfolio stood at $425 million, almost 426, a little bit lower than three months prior, back at the end of May. Back in May, it was $450 million. This is typical, it's a typical cycle for county treasuries, as county treasuries collect taxes in the run-up to December and in the run-up to April, and for the rest of the year, they spend down that money as the participants in the pool pull that money out, like your schools, to spend for their needs, and the county as well. So, you really won't see an upsurge in collections until you start seeing tax collections, starting in early, late November, early December. So, there's a rundown in the balances. But as of that date, you average, you have an average maturity of one and a half years. And again, the portfolio that Chandler manages is targeted at 1.8 years. When we blend in the money that's invested in the state pool, in the Local Agency Investment Fund, it brings that average down just a little bit. It also brings down the yield, because the investments in the pool are lower than what we have in the portfolio of securities. But you're at one and a half years, your duration is 1.34 years. That's a risk measure, letting us know how much of an impact the portfolio would have in its market value if interest rates were to move. That 1.34 basically says, if interest rates were to drop 1%, you would gain 1.34% in value. If interest rates rise 1%, you would lose 1.34% in value. It's a risk measure. You can see it's very low risk, it's a very low volatility portfolio. As of the month, the end of August, the annual, the effective annualized yield you're expected to earn on this portfolio, the way things stand in the portfolio, is 1.44%. The standalone portfolio is in the 1.55 range, and growing. You can see, indeed, the consolidated portfolio three months prior. If you look at that average purchase yield, it was 0.98. Today, it's 1.44. So, investments with lower yields mature, drop off, the money comes back, it gets reinvested, it gets reinvested in higher yields, moving the average higher. The market yield is the yield that you would get if you had purchased this portfolio on that date. You can see that it's grown, because market yields, yields in the markets have grown considerably. So, here's another way to think about that. When something matures, if we reinvest it back in the portfolio and purchase securities that look just like the portfolio is structured today, we should be picking up yields averaging somewhere around 3%. So, it shows you how the new yields are impacting the purchase yield, that 144 I showed you earlier. Very high credit quality, you're averaging double-A. If we go to the next page, I'm going to focus on the chart on the left-hand side. Almost a third of this portfolio is invested in U.S. Treasury Obligations. This is the county lending money to the U.S. government. That's considered the safest investment pretty much in the world. Very high credit quality. You do lend money to corporate issuers, very high credit quality, U.S. corporate issuers, single-A or higher. And they don't just make into your portfolio because they have a single-A. We do credit work, which is part of the risk mitigation process that we do. We don't just buy any credit out there, we're looking for certain metrics and certain standards that they meet. Local government, you can see the LAIF, Local Agency Investment Fund, that's the state pool. The treasury uses that as liquidity, so they simply withdraw money out of there or put it back in. It's almost a little bit like a very high-yielding, very well-run checking account, is what it is. And that's where you write your checks off of, that gets rolled into the county's bank account, and from there's where you write the checks. But it's there to earn a little bit of a higher yield than what you would get in the banks, and it has overnight availability. We don't manage that. That's just, you know, the money gets moved in and out of there for the county's needs. You have, I also wanted to highlight just some of the other, some of the other names in here. You do lend about 14, almost 15% of this portfolio to federal agencies, like Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, they're government-sponsored enterprises. But you can see that this is a really well-diversified portfolio. You can also see, if you just skip pages 20, go down to, if you would, to, let's see if we put it in here. We didn't put it in here, that's all right. What I wanted to highlight was, we've also diversified, not just in the security types, but we also diversified in the maturities. We hold maturities all the way out to three years, to five years. If we have the ability to do that right now, you don't have anything longer than just a little bit over three years. That's part of the strategy. As Supervisor Paeska highlighted earlier, we're trying to stay a little bit shorter, because rates have been on the rise, and that allows us to capture those higher rates a little faster. But you can see the makeup of the portfolio, a little bit over 30% is either in investments that are overnight or shorter than 90 days. So, that's a lot of liquidity, but that's being drawn down on, and it will continue to be drawn down on, until we start seeing the run-up in tax collections in November. So, that's a very typical and a good liquidity position. You have money, and you have it available when you need it, which is one of the requirements of code. If you look at page 22, we can see the yield, the maturity history, and you can see that, so this is, at every point in that line is looking forward what you're expected to earn on an annualized basis. So, you can see that that number has been on the rise, and again, it's for that dynamic that I showed you earlier. We're shorter, rates are higher available in the markets. When things mature, we reinvest in higher yields, driving that average higher. So, those are the highlights. I think that going forward, it's important to keep an eye on the volatility in the markets right now. Inflation is really playing havoc, not just in the United States, but in Europe and abroad. The European Central Bank recently raised rates, the Canadians have been right behind them. Inflationary pressures are a theme on a global basis. We've had disrupted supply chains from Asia. We've had strong pent-up demand as COVID sort of winds down, and consumers, like you and I, are now, well, we've been saving money, and we've been sitting at home, and now we want to take that vacation. If you try and rent a car or buy a flight, they're going to be very expensive. So, that has to be tamped down. This is very high inflation, it has to be tamped down. The Federal Reserve, it's doing its work to tamp it down, but that work to tamp it down is slowing the economy down. The side effect, because of their activities, is that we have higher yields, which should propel your earnings going forward higher. But of course, the value of the investments on paper are dropping as a result of that. Not to worry, you're not going to realize that. You know, the things that would make us realize it is if you had credit problems. Businesses were doing so poorly that they're not able to pay you your debt back, and that's not the case here, quite the opposite. Corporate America is doing quite well. So, let me pause there and take any questions that you may have.
All right. Well, I think that concludes the presentation that we have for your board today. At this point, the action that's recommended by staff would be to accept the report, unless your board did have any other questions on this.
No, thank you for the, thank you for this update, and I'll see if there's anyone in the public that has any questions on this item on the agenda. Looking online here at the same time. I don't see any hands up, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to accept the June 30th, 2022 Report of the Lake County Pooled Investments.
Second.
So, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Barbara, and thank you, Patrick, very much for this presentation.
Well, and thank you for working collaboratively on this and getting us in this much stronger position than we were in a year ago.
With that, let's move on to our next item, which is the 6.6, Discussion of Sheriff's Department Staffing. With that, I'll invite the sheriff up and go ahead and... You should be allowed to wear your airborne wings with your sheriff.
Okay, thank you. As you see, I brought a couple of members of my staff with me, and there's some additional members in the audience, as well as Chief Probation Officer, Rob Howe. This is a topic of discussion that affects a lot of people, not only in our departments, but a lot of people in our community. Well, my hope for this presentation is to go over, an overview of what our current staffing levels are, what they should be, how we got to where we are, outline some of the solutions that we've tried to implement, and come out of this at the end with, hopefully, some direction, guidance, or approval from the board to bring something back to the board, as far as some solutions to get us out of our staffing problem. One of the things we're going to talk about is our staffing plan. The staffing plan, I've mentioned this at a couple different meetings with the Board of Supervisors, but the facility was approved for construction in 1995, and a staffing plan was approved by the Board of Supervisors in 1995, under Resolution Number 95-196. And in that staffing plan, it also had an overall cost projection lifecycle of the facility, and I want to talk about what it predicted we would need to run the facility over the course of 30 years, and of course, we're 27 years into that, and do a comparison of what it looks like actually today. In 1995, it was projected that the budget needed in the upcoming fiscal year would be $12,784,000, and our actual budget is, we expect it to be in the neighborhood of 8.5 million. The staffing plan projected the need for a total of 63 law enforcement persons. The staffing plan projected the need for a total of 63 law enforcement personnel. Back then, they were classified as correctional officers and sergeants, and you see the numbers up there. It anticipated that we would need 55 correctional officers, which are now classified as Deputy Sheriff Corrections, as well as eight sergeants. And our current position allocations are down to 44 and six respectively. That's a pretty marked difference of nearly four and a half million dollars and a staffing difference of, an allocated staffing difference of 13 positions. I bring this up here to show that this is a result of many years of the sheriff's office, not only under my administration, but under previous administrations, continuing to do more with less, continuing to meet the needs with less and less money and less and less staffing, but still getting the mission accomplished. And we're here today because we're at a point where we're not able to do that any further. What was projected back then out of the 63 allocated positions, I want to put this up there to kind of give a visual of what that would look like. And people there, those, the green bodies there would represent Deputy Sheriff Corrections, and the yellow would represent sergeants. Next slide. Here's what we're currently allocated, a total of 50 positions, 44 being Deputy Sheriff Corrections and six sergeants. And out of those positions, we have functionally 17 that are filled. We have an additional seven that are on leave or going to be on leave for various reasons. Those reasons include being on modified duty, light duty because of injury, light duty because of medical conditions. They might be on leave for some protected leave, family medical leave, child bonding leave, those types of things. We still have to recognize that we have obligations to our employees that we have to meet. So we have another seven that are on leave for various reasons. And in addition, this presentation was a little bit, it was a very much a working document because the number of vacancies that we've had continues to increase. And right now, we are currently aware of three that are either resigning or retiring within the next couple of weeks and some as soon as next week. And we anticipate there's going to be additional resignations and/or retirements as time goes on. And so that's what we're looking at. We're looking at 17 filled functioning Deputy Sheriff Corrections. And when you compare that to what was approved by the Board of Supervisors and what was outlined as the need, 17 happens to be the number of correctional staff that would be necessary to function a full shift as projected in 1995. The staffing plan that was approved by the Board of Supervisors back then called for two escort or rover officers, four fixed housing officers. For any of you that, if you've been out of jail, you recall that we have different housing units, and the staffing plan calls for a housing officer to be stationed at each location. We've made changes. We've tasked Deputy Sheriff Corrections with performing multiple functions. Instead of having one correctional officer performing housing function, we might have that correctional officer covering two housing units and also asking, acting as an escort officer and also acting as a booking officer. The staffing plan called for two booking officers, a shift supervisor, three transportation officers, a transport supervisor, two classification officers, and one disciplinary, a part-time disciplinary slash grievance officer. And when you add all those up, that comes to 17, which is best per shift, and that's the number of people that we have right now. Next slide. Same obligations exist. With those 50 allocated positions, we have the 23 that are out there, and you subtract the number of people that are out for various reasons or planning on retiring and resigning in the near future. Their duties include housing and supervising inmates. We have to transport inmates to court, to various medical appointments, to and from other facilities. We have to go pick them up. If they get picked up on warrants out of county, we have to take them to state prison if they're sentenced to state prison. There's various transfers that need to occur while simultaneously performing intake and booking procedures on fresh arrests. People that are getting booked for warrants are, the sheriff's office is tasked with administering warrants throughout the county. In addition to those daily duties, the staff has to calculate credits. When the court sentences somebody to a certain amount of time, there's a calculation that goes in, takes in consideration any work that they performed, any good credits that they performed, if they calculated or performed any, completed any programs such as education programs. Somebody needs to monitor that, and that's another task that they do. We have people that are in alternative work program, home detention assignments. We have to monitor them because they're still our responsibility. They're technically considered in custody, but so serving an alternate sentence, and we need to make sure that they're properly supervised. We have a registration program for our sex offenders, for our narcotics offenders or gang offenders, and they also perform the live scan function, most notably for some of the cannabis licensing that goes on with the county. And they also have to assist our medical providers out of the facility. So you can see that the tasks are very difficult, and with the staffing levels, it's causing quite a bit of strain and stress on the staff. We've searched for several remedies, and again, I'm here because I think I've opened ideas, but I feel like I've largely exhausted all the remedies that I have available at my level, my authority. We have a deputy trainee that's in the academy. We've assigned six, and that number might have changed again, I think, as early as since yesterday. But when we created this presentation, it was six deputy sheriffs that are currently assigned to the jail to work in transportation and to help in some of the housing units. Our staffing problems extend out to the dispatch center. We also have some significant shortages in the dispatch center, so we have three deputy sheriffs that are all assigned to dispatch. And we're also staffing an extra deputy sheriff position in the courts because some of our part-time staff is not able to work as much as we had hoped. What this all results in is a reduction in services at the street. It's had an impact on our patrol. We've not been able to fill our school resource officer position simply because we don't have the people, and it's currently going to have an impact on some of our other specialty assignments, including the roadmap task force and our marijuana investigation and enforcement. So we had some proposals, and again, continuing theme, this presentation is a work in progress. We completed this. I got a phone call since we completed this presentation that makes this particular slide. And this, here's where we get into the proposals that I would like the board to consider and hopefully approve in concept and direct staff to bring back for approval. Our first one is we recognize that our deputy sheriffs that signed up to be street deputies that are finding themselves in positions to go work and help at the jail or work in helping dispatch, sometimes they're having to do that for prolonged periods of time. For example, we have one deputy sheriff out of the last seven years, I believe she spent five years working in dispatch and sometimes working five 12-hour shifts routinely during the week, and we're experiencing some burnout there. We wanted to incentivize that by providing for, or asking for, a 10% staffing incentive for any DSA member who was assigned to the jail or assigned to dispatch for any reason. I will tell you that the uplifting news that I got from the Deputy Sheriff's Association meeting last night was that the Deputy Sheriff's Association realized that the staffing problem at the jail does not, while it may not directly impact their bargaining unit, it indirectly affects it. And in the, what I will call a show of solidarity and support, they've turned this down. They're not asking for a 10% incentive. They realize that it's very likely that it'll have an opposite effect. They realize that when they go out to work in dispatch, they're not a fully functional dispatcher. When they go out and work at the jail, they're not a fully functional correctional officer, and they're doing less work and getting paid more money than the people that are already there. And to tack on another 10%, they felt that that would be detrimental to morale for the other employees, and they've asked me to remove this request. The slide's still here. Ignore it, but for me, that was a tremendous show of the dedication of the employees that you have here, in addition to working the mandated overtime for well over a year in the conditions that I've just described to you, to know that we still have public servants and law enforcement officers who recognize that sometimes the need for the greater good outweighs the need for the individual good, and I appreciate that. Same with this. We're going to disregard this request, and it's going to have an impact on some future slides. Next slide. The other proposals that I would like to suggest is some enhanced hiring incentives. The Board of Supervisors recognized that these hiring incentives, particularly in law enforcement, and as they've also spread out to some other job classifications in the county, this is just becoming what needs to be done to get people to come work at your agency. The first thing that I would like to request is an increased hiring incentive from the $10,000 to the $15,000 for any applicant who has already completed the California Core Academy and who's already completed Penal Code 832 training, which is laws of arrest training. And that means that basically that would eliminate about six weeks of training that we would have to have. This is designed to attract lateral applicants, people from other agencies that have already been employed. We have counties right next door, Mendocino County is a 1937 Act county. I would hope that this might attract somebody who's able to retire from that system and come work in a PR system and start a second pension, at least for a couple of years, and lock them into a three-year commitment, payable $5,000 each year for three years, first at the time of fire at the end of their probationary period, and then at the beginning of the third year. While this looks good, I don't know that, I don't have a whole lot of hope that this would actually do what I would like it to do, but I want to put it out there.
I have a question about this. So we have the $10,000 hiring bonus now, and is there a time commitment for that?
There is. The current $10,000 is a two-year commitment.
Okay.
So this would increase the retention by an extra year and increase what we're already offering by $5,000. And when you think about the actual cost, if we're not having to send somebody to the academy, we typically have to pay for lodging expenses per day and the cost of the academy, and then not have that person available to work during the time that they're academy, this makes sense to do.
Just follow-up question to that, Brian.
Yes.
What type of impact has that, the $10,000 had at this point? Do you have?
I knew you were going to ask minutia questions like this, and that's why I brought the gentleman across from me, who's our sergeant that's in charge of recruiting, and I'll have him talk about his experiences.
Okay.
Actually, can we wait and get to, well, let me get through the slides.
Okay.
Write that question down, because we're going to get to it. All right, well, the fact that we're here having a discussion, I guess, could tell you that...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I want to make sure positive impact.
Yes, we are. Yeah, definitely. One, a very, it's not unique to our situation, but it's unique when you're thinking about in terms of being an employer. We have a legal obligation. Penal Code Section 4021 requires that we have an appropriately trained female custodial staff available anytime we have a female in custody at our facility. So of course, that requires that we have a number of female Deputy Sheriff Corrections available to us, and right now, we have one. And when I say we have one, we have more on the books, but we only have one that is not out on one of those leaves that I talked about. There's four that are out on leave. One of the retirements that is coming up is a female Deputy Sheriff Corrections, and another of the resignations is a female Deputy Sheriff Corrections, which leaves us with one fully functioning and able to be deployed in contact with inmates, female Deputy Sheriff Corrections. And that's going to be, that's going to continue to be a problem. The law enforcement profession has historically been male-dominated. Attracting females to this particular line of work has been a long-term challenge for law enforcement, not just here, but across the country for a long time. And it's particularly challenging here when we have a work situation, such as I described, where they're being tasked with certain things. When the levels of female Deputy Sheriff Corrections that are available to work diminish to the levels that they have, it's a tough sell to get somebody to come work. We can fix that by hiring more females, and my proposal to do that is to increase, offer another additional enhanced hiring incentive for a maximum of eight successful applicants to female Deputy Sheriff Corrections. And again, with that same three-year commitment and payable in those increments that are outlined, about $5,000 at the time of hire, and then $7,500 a year after that until the third year. This is absolutely necessary. We're taking steps now to ensure that, do the best that we can to comply with the law, and this isn't a policy, this isn't a BSCC regulation, this isn't a best practice. The law requires that we have a female on duty at all times and available to conduct searches, and anytime a male Deputy Sheriff Corrections or correctional staff enters a housing unit or a room that's occupied by females, they have to be accompanied by a person of the same gender. We currently have about 40 females in custody. So it's not a matter of, hey, there's a couple, and we could contract them out somewhere else to be housed. It's a definite need, and I'm hopeful that this enhanced hiring incentive would result in maybe some people out there that were kind of sitting on the fence, maybe taking a hard look at this and coming and applying to work at our agency. I want to talk about a retention incentive. We have a recruitment and retention committee that's assigned to the county, and what we're, I think we all kind of knew that this would be an undertone, that we're offering incentives for people to come work here, and people that have been longtime loyal employees are sometimes feeling less valued, and I think we need to value our current employees, and offering a $5,000 retention incentive is my proposal for that. Again, this will come with strings. This requires a 12-month commitment from the employee. It will only be at the request of the employee. As I said earlier, there's people that are wanting to retire, and if they decide, oh, hey, maybe I'll stick it out for another year, and I'll put in for this, I'm happy to, happy to make that available to them, but I also want to recognize that we're not going to provide somebody with an incentive and have them drop their retirement paperwork two months later. If people that would be ineligible for this is anybody that's already received a hiring incentive from the county. It's, I think that's just the fair thing to do. I want to limit the availability of this to 30 days. We're looking for solutions to this. I want to know in the near future what our staffing is going to look like. I don't want to make predictions six months down the road or have to make adjustments six months down the road for somebody that decides then that's the time for them to do. We're at a point where we need to know now what our staffing situation is going to be like. So this will give us that idea. It will also recognize those employees who have worked through these tough times, those employees that have been working mandated 412s and sometimes six to seven days straight on 12-hour shifts. And we estimate that there will be about 27 people that are eligible for this particular hiring incentive. I don't know that they'll all take it, but I know that there's 27 that are eligible.
So this is one time within the next 30 days or 30 days if this was, were to be agreed upon?
Yes.
And no other incentive could have been provided?
Correct. It wouldn't be available to anybody that's already received it.
And that's going to help plan for the next 12 months.
I would hope it helps plan for the next, and I hope it helps keep people here so we don't have another glut. Over the last couple of weeks, we've had half dozen resignations, maybe a little more than half dozen resignations and retirements.
And those, just to be clear on all the reasons of those resignations, there's exit interviews being conducted?
I've reached out to Human Resources to ask and reached out to the employees. I've only had one exit interview that I've conducted over the years that, where somebody's been candid and honest with me. I've had a lot of exit interviews, and I find people just like, they don't want to, they feel like maybe by being honest, they're bad-mouthing the entity, and they don't want to do that. I've asked them to have those discussions with Human Resources and for Human Resources to share those results with me. So far, one person has responded to the exit interview, and there was a variety of reasons cited for them wanting to leave. A lot of them had to do with the work, the workload and the fact that it's just, it's too taxing. Next slide. I would like, currently county employees, and I will share with you that I did have a discussion with Supervisor Sabatier, who couldn't be here, but one of the things that he brought up that I want to include in this is that we don't want to get into a situation where we have departments hooching amongst the county and just shifting these hiring problems around. But I also recognize that the county, being the largest employer in the county, has a pool of people that already work for the county, that already know what it's like to live here, and that's, a lot of the times, that's some of the challenges that we have is when we have people coming from out of the area, they're not, they're not willing to live a Lake County lifestyle where it's rural, where you don't make as much money as you do in your more urban areas, but the county already has a bunch of people here that are accustomed to that. And I would like the Board of Supervisors to allow me to offer that, these hiring incentives to current county employees, but limited to a number of just 12. Once we hit 12 current county employees, and all the hiring incentives would be the same. Of course, if you've already received a hiring incentive, you wouldn't be eligible, but if you were a female that worked in for the county, we've had applicants from other departments over the years that have applied for positions. We've hired some from other departments that have come in here, so I know they're out there, and maybe they don't, they don't want to because they don't feel incentivized, and I think this incentive, if we offered it to current county employees, and again, a limit of 12, might trigger some people to come apply and work for the sheriff's office. And all those incentives would have the same time commitments as they would for non-county employees. Two years for the standard hiring incentives, and if it's one of the enhanced incentives, either the previously trained or the female Deputy Sheriff Correction applicant, and strictly for the Deputy Sheriff Corrections job classification, that would be the three-year enhanced commitment. Our cost increase estimate, everybody wants to know, well, what's this going to cost? We factored out what the difference would be. We're already paying incentives, so the increase in cost for, would make any difference, I guess, for, if we... guess, if we were to hire current county employees for the standard incentive, but when you pencil out the numbers here, and again, this is one of the slides that was affected, with the 10% incentive, we estimated that would probably be in the neighborhood of $60,000 a year, so that's off the table. They've, as I said, the DSA has requested that be withdrawn. But the enhanced $15,000 hiring incentive, if we were to hire two, which I think is probably optimistic, you're looking at an increase of $10,000 in year three. So, we're not going to, it's not going to cost us anymore until we hit year three. The female deputy sheriff corrections incentive, if we were able to hire all eight, that comes out to an increase in the second year of $20,000, and then third years of $60,000. Our retention incentives are the biggest bite at the apple there. At 100, if everybody were to take it that's eligible, $135,000. So, again, those numbers at the bottom, you can take $60,000 off of each of those, and that's what we estimate that it would cost. It's not, I don't think that's overly burdensome. I think that the costs there are worth it.
So, I have a question about morale. So, if you have these employees that have been with us for years and years and years, they're not eligible for any incentive, and yet they see everybody around them getting incentives, how is that going to be managed so we don't lose those valued employees?
Are you, which?
Well, if you're not, I'm sorry.
Are you talking about my employees or?
Well, your employees.
My employees, the fact that I'm offering the $5,000 retention incentive is designed to deal with that. I think our employees, and it's only for, when we're talking about our staffing levels here, you have employees, it's hard to say and explain unless you've experienced it. But when you look at our vacancy rating, we talked about we have a target of 20% vacancy rating, but when you look at your, the projection that was anticipated when the jail was built as far as staffing, and you compare it to what our available staffing is, it's a 70% vacancy rating. And when you have people that are a 70% vacancy rating, I would say that there's a good chance that their morale is going to be negatively impacted. So, this $5,000 incentive, while we carry them through, while hopefully these other things are effective in getting those numbers back up, that carries them through, and while it's not a whole lot, it's something. You have people that I say that are already dedicated, but their dedication is drying up, it's leaving, and that $5,000 retention incentive is designed, or intended to be a show of appreciation from the employer, that their efforts are appreciated, we value them, and we want them to stick around for a while. If you're talking about overall, with the other 900 and some odd employees that the county has, I would, that's an issue for another entity.
Well, I'm just talking about your employees. So, if they're not eligible for any incentives, yet they see everybody around them getting incentives, so their workload would likely go back down to a more manageable level if everybody around them is...
Yes, and the group that the staffing shortage impacts the most outside of the Correctional Officer Association is the Deputy Sheriff's Association, because they're having to pick up vacant positions. They're having to work in dispatch, and they realize that, hey, if we get these staffing programs fixed, I can get back out there and do what I was hired to do. I can not be, maybe not be in dispatch or not be working at the jail, because there's people that are being hired and trained to go out and do that job, and I can get back to the street and conduct those criminal investigations, or I can get back in the school and be the school resource officer that I wanted to be. So, our hope is, is that by shifting them back to the job that they originally signed on to do, that's going to improve their morale as well. And the fact that they've foregone that 10%, that request for a 10% incentive in order to make that happen and not further erode morale in the currently impacted units is a testament to how much they want that to happen. Morale's a hard thing. We talk about all the different things that impact law enforcement hiring. I will tell you that this is not unique to Lake County. Just sitting on my phone, I typed into Google, "law enforcement hiring challenges," and as recently as, I think it was April, CNN did an article on nationwide staffing shortages. The Police Executive Research Forum recently did a study that showed an increase in retirements of 44% this year and an increase in resignations of 18% this year. And all across the nation, eight entities are having difficulty staffing people. It's for a lot of reasons. It's for pay. You have the sentiment that a law enforcement officer that's out on the street is one bullet away from death, one bad decision or one bad situation away from being indicted. You have competing interests. You have agencies that surround us that offer hiring incentives that either match or exceed ours. And for example, Sonoma County has announced that they've told our staff this, and in our fields, that they're considering a $20,000 hiring bonus for correctional staff. Ukiah Police Department and Mendocino County Sheriff's Office both offer $20,000 hiring incentives. Even Humboldt County offers a $12,000 hiring incentive, and if you're willing to go to work at Redding Police Department, they have a $40,000, I don't know how they do this, a $40,000 hiring incentive to go, for laterals, to go work at Redding Police Department. You have a workforce that's faced with legislative changes. You have the civil unrest that's associated with excessive force, the George Floyd protests. You have legislation that's recently been passed that's going to make it more lucrative to go work at McDonald's, where you can make $22 an hour, or you can be a public safety dispatcher and answer 911 calls on weekends and holidays in the middle of the night and listen to people giving their last dying breath for $18 an hour. These challenges are not going anywhere. The solution is, or the problem is universal, but I think the solution needs to be right here in front of this board and in this county.
So, what goes hand in hand with the financial changes could be, what is the research for nationwide for the non-financial ways to improve morale?
I don't know that there's a bunch of research on that, on the non-financial. Like I say, I think the police reform that's gone in has had the, it's simply had the effect of making law enforcement a less attractive career choice for people. You hear stories, the reality of it is that the overwhelming majority of law enforcement officers, there's 80-some-odd thousand law enforcement officers in California, and I don't know how many hundreds of thousands across the country, go to and do their job to the best of their abilities, but one situation can result in them being indicted, killed, imprisoned, and they see that so many times. There's still, thankfully, there's still people that are willing to come out and do this job, but clearly, those numbers are less and less. I don't know, you know.
I'm just wondering if there's success stories where, I mean, it's a problem across the country?
Yeah.
And you, we can look at the financial side of it, but what else can be done? That's all I'm asking.
Yeah. Well, I'll tell you some of the things that we've tried here, and as I said earlier, I'm out of ideas. If you have more, I'm happy to hear them, but some of the things that we've done here, John Drury is a sergeant with our agency. He's dedicated full-time to going out and recruiting people. We've sent him to nationwide trainings on police recruitment and techniques and tactics. He's implemented a bunch of different practices. He makes personal contact with applicants, which seems to help. When he gets an application in, we streamlined our hiring process. Back when I was doing his job, it wasn't uncommon for us to do recruitment, and then four or five months later, we would get the list of applicants, and of course, everybody by that time already had a job. He streamlined some of those processes where he now has instant access, and I'll thank the Human Resources Department for working with us on this as well, but he has instant access. As soon as somebody turns in an application, he can make contact with them and start that process rolling, because I'll tell you that the qualified applicants get grabbed up really quickly. They're few and far between. We have competing agencies, as I said, that frequently offer more money and higher incentives than we do, but that personal touch that we try to put on it helps out a lot. We've streamlined the testing process with the deputy sheriff corrections testing. It used to be an antiquated system where we'd tell them, hey, we have 10 people coming to apply. We'd have to mail off, and they'd mail us 10 written tests. It's now streamlined, and he's able to conduct those tests online. We administer the state, what's called the Pellet B, which is the police entry law, what's, police entry...
Level law enforcement.
Test test. Which is post-approved test for all peace officers to take. Post still currently uses the, that old method of mailing out tests, taking a couple of days at least to get there, and then take another couple of days to process. Post is beta testing, an online version of it with a couple of agencies. We're hopeful that that will be successful and make that same resource available to us, so we can process these applications quickly. And a lot of it's the hiring incentives that we offer, and I'll allow John to give his testimony on what his experiences have been as far as hiring. Do you want to go over these numbers, or do you want me to go over?
I can go over.
Okay.
I took over this position in March of last year, to where I've been doing the hiring and recruiting. In 2001, related to the correctional deputy position, I did seven recruitments. There were 85 applicants, and three people got hired out of all of those. One has already left for another agency and making more money. This year, for correctional deputy, I've done four recruitments. There was 30 applicants, and there was four hires. In March, or in May of this year, I switched to doing a, we opened it up for a continuous recruitment, and that has allowed me to have access to NeoGov through human resources. So, like the sheriff was saying, I'm able to get the applications same day if I'm sitting at my computer and able to see who's applied and call them. I call every applicant that comes in, and I'm able to arrange testing for them now. Instead of having to order the written tests like we used to, I'm able to do them online. So, that process has been streamlined, and since May of this year, we've had a lot more success because we're a little bit quicker. With 48 applicants, we've had one hire, one conditional hire letter. We have two in backgrounds currently. I have four interviews tomorrow, and I did, there were seven that took the written test yesterday. So, there's, it's getting better, but the applicant pool's not there. I was talking with Lieutenant Ward, and he was saying, a few years back when he was doing my position, that on average, there was 50 people that were applying per recruitment, and right now, I'm having an average of maybe 10. And usually, out of that, you'll have five that show up, two that pass the test, one that maybe makes it into backgrounds, and usually, maybe one out of eight that get into backgrounds, pass backgrounds. So, the applicant pool's just not there. Related to the hiring incentive, and if that's drawing people in, yes, that when people see that big number or bigger number, it is attractive. Every other agency is doing it right now. If we're not doing it, then we're completely behind the ball. Dispatch was another thing that I had taken some numbers for, because we have three deputies that are up there. In 2001, I did six recruitments, 51 applicants, three were hired and two have already left. This year so far, I've done five recruitments for dispatch. There's been 44 applicants, and nobody hired. Related to the deputy, the patrol deputy side of things, the DSA side, you know, I had some success going to academies and recruiting people to come here on that side, but now we're to a position to where we're assigning these people that were signed up and agreed to come here strictly to be a patrol deputy, and now we're putting them in assignments that they didn't sign up for. Now, we didn't lie to them about anything, because we've never experienced anything like this with having to assign so many people to the jail on dispatch, but these folks that paid their own way through an academy, we didn't sponsor them, they paid their own way to be able to work the streets, now they're going and doing things that they don't want to do, which was the idea behind the 10% incentive, to try and give some sort of an incentive to these people that, you know, hey, we're sorry for doing this, you know, this hopefully will ease the pain, but what will ease the pain is getting them to be able to do the job that they signed up to do. Go ahead.
Another step to improve morale, as I mentioned earlier, our most critical and legally challenging staffing shortage comes with the number of female deputy sheriff corrections that we have available. As I said, one, unless she decides she wants to take a full-time residency out there, which I don't anticipate, is not, won't allow us to meet our legal requirements. So, we've had to move some of our female patrol deputies out there to cover shifts. You know, as of, as recently as yesterday, we had a meeting with Chief Rob Howe with the probation department. He has several employees over there that have got previous experience both in our facility and are both trained, or as well as some that are trained that had worked at the juvenile hall. And so, we've worked out a very temporary solution. It's not a long-term fix to have appropriately trained probation officers basically have their workstation out at the sheriff's office to cover some of those shifts where we don't have females available. I want to thank him. He's here to answer any questions you have as far as the impacts of that, but the idea is that they're not going to go out there and be, perform correctional officer duties other than when it's legally required for them to perform searches or join male staff as they enter into female housing units. Again, temporary solutions, we can...
But with, I mean, that's, it's temporary in short term, but it's also going to take a long time to make those hires unless you're trying to attract them from another department?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, it takes a long time.
Yeah.
I have a question. What are the requirements for basically a CO? Is it similar across the state?
The requirement to be a deputy sheriff corrections is 18 years of age. The law changed and made it a 21-year age minimum for street deputies, but for the correctional deputy classification, you can be 18 years old, high school graduate, I think citizen, or obtain citizenship within one year of appointment, pass a background investigation, medical psych, physical agility...
Driver's license.
Driver's license, and that's it. We provide the training, unless somebody's, as I said earlier, if there's somebody that's already appropriately trained, we will provide the training and send them to the academy.
And then with dispatch, is there a common training for any officer that goes through like the academies? So, they already have that training to become a dispatcher, or they just kind of like, just kind of wing it?
No, we're having to train them up there as well. They're already familiar with a lot of the things that dispatchers need to learn upon initial hire. They're already familiar with what the codes are, the priority of designation of calls, identifying what's a crime versus what's a civil matter, which is, or how to kind of triage complaints. They already have some of that training. Post requires that anybody that's working in dispatch, either within one year of appointment completes a dispatch academy, or peace officers have an exemption to that requirement, and they can work in there as well. So, we can't just simply put other civilian staff in there to fill that role.
So, commonly, it's probably someone with a little more experience that you probably put in that position, or is it just random?
We, what I try to do is not put anybody that's on probation for anything in there.
Okay.
So, we have the ability to evaluate their performance. So, generally, it's somebody who's not on probation as an initial hire or on probation as a supervisor, but we're finding that we're getting to levels and the need, particularly amongst the female deputy sheriff correction staff, that we're having to deviate from that.
And probably is another, you know, lowering morale type of thing?
Yes.
Because they want to be on the street?
Yeah.
Another question I have is, how soon do you anticipate some of this working? I know that it's going to take some time, like you said, but do you have an estimate? Maybe like if all of this goes through, how long you think it will take before some of these temporary fixes can kind of work itself out and balance out to estimate it all? Did you guys discuss that, or is it just...
I would hope that within a month, we would start seeing an increase in applications, but as far as the actual working of it, it takes time to hire somebody. Somebody gives two weeks' notice, and it takes months before we get somebody to replace them. The hiring process typically takes, from the time we get their application, on the quick end, about two months, maybe, if it's a local person.
It's extremely quick.
Yeah, extremely. If we had somebody local, or maybe somebody that's already, you know, employed at our agency and is looking to promote, maybe we could do it in two months. All the way up to six months, training for deputy sheriff corrections is about a month, and then they also have an in-house training program that lasts 16 weeks. 12 weeks or 16?
12.
12 weeks. Same for dispatchers. The same timeframes, we do a full background investigation. Our background investigations are fairly thorough. It's not simply a fingerprint check or a credit check. We do very thorough background investigations where we talk to previous employers, we talk to neighbors, we talk to roommates, current spouses, significant others, former spouses, significant others, and really do a deep dive because these positions are so important. So, it's, the background investigation isn't just a simple, you know, Google search. It takes quite a bit of time, and when there's people from out of the area, it takes even more time. And again, with dispatchers, the dispatch academy is about three weeks or a month, and then their training, their training program is another, anywhere from four to five months. So, it's, like you say, a two-week, a two-week notice is, takes a long, long time to recover from.
Is there thought of an incentive for dispatch at all, or?
Well, I hadn't factored that in there, but seeing that the deputy sheriffs have graciously foregone their request, that's certainly on the table, and that's what I would hope to come out of this conversation, is some additional discussion from this board, and knowing that those, the proposal is suddenly $60,000 a year or less in anticipated or estimated costs, I absolutely, I would entertain those same incentives being made available to our current dispatch staff.
We, like, because I know with... We like, cause I know with court, we usually, you know, contract retired officers to come and be bailiffs. Is that ever thought of for things like transport from the jail to the court or even dispatch at times? Maybe that's another thing we could look at. But then again, I don't know the pool of retired officers in the county and whatnot, so.
Yeah, well, we, we make use of every, I don't know that we've ever turned somebody down that's retired and wanted to come back and not put them to work who were doing that in some capacity.
And then with regard to, you mentioned like numbers of people, one out of like 80 at times. Is it interest qualifications or some of the background investigations just kind of takes them out?
So along the, it's way less than one in eight. We're, I mean, we're probably like one in 15 people that apply actually can make it through the process. But maybe like one in eight people that actually go into the background portion of it, they've passed the written test, they've passed the oral board interviews and we put them into a background like one in eight are failing out of that from background issues.
And that's, that's the bare minimum that you can accept according to law? Is that how it works with those type of tests?
Post, post has dimensions that we're, we have to weigh out each candidate with to be able to hire them.
Okay, that's all.
We'd, we'd like to think we have a perfect system. We do as thorough a job as we can, but anything less would result in you hiring people that were, would be detrimental to the county, the profession, the agency. We do a pretty, pretty deep dive when we do background investigations.
And those would probably be standard across the state anyhow, like so?
Yeah, every, post has its, there's legal requirements. Obviously you can't have a, you can't be convicted of felony because you can't possess a firearm. You have to meet certain age requirements, certain education requirements. But every agency has its own set of standards and they're, they're fairly consistent across the state. Nobody wants somebody in uniform with a badge and a gun that shouldn't be.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I guess the only comment is obviously, I want to thank you for coming with some type of solutions or opportunities. I know that we're doing the incentives, you know, for me, I think those incentives are very important to carry forward. As you said, all across the Bay Area, all these other departments are, we're not going to be able to reach some of those levels like you talked about reading, doing 40,000. But I know even the Bay Area, Oakland, some of the other places are, are doing these incentives. Seems like it's, it's, it's a new way to do that. So let's, yeah, I'm in favor of all, including the dispatchers at this point. At least coming back and having some more discussion as a board because it's needed. You know, we need, as you said, retain the employees that we have. We have great employees here in the county all through, but today we're discussing the sheriff's department and we've got to get, we've got to get some help there. So it's good to hear that the $10,000 is at least being a positive opportunity for people to look at the job and come in and fill out the application. So let's hope any other changes we make will just help drive those changes you guys need over there.
And I guess what I would, what I would close with, and of course, we have the opportunity for public input and I'm hopeful to hear some, maybe some additional suggestions from members of the public. But what I would ask for is I guess consensus direction, guidance from the board to return at the next board meeting with a resolution implementing these, these requests.
I just have one question. Have we identified a revenue source to fund these incentives? Or is it salary savings or?
I don't know that we'll have salary savings because we're eating our salary savings by having sworn staff work in dispatch. If, if this is my opportunity to identify a revenue source, I'll identify revenues from the cannabis funds. These are, these are one-time expenditures and I think that would be a good source.
We have budget hearings next week, so I thought we, could we just have the expanded conversation there?
Well, that, if that gets this implemented as quickly as next week, that would be awesome. I want, I want to get this done soon.
We wouldn't be able to pass a resolution though, that we could.
So ideally, if we brought it to the next meeting, which would be the Tuesday, the resolution would be for the budget hearings. Would it be possible that after the budget hearings that next week, if we can discuss it, go from that point and pass it the next week? Or could we pass it in the budget hearings as well? We could pass it in the budget hearings.
We can pass it in budget hearings? Okay.
So that, that's next week, so. You all right with the discussion? Oh, Ms. Grant, go ahead, sorry.
It should be listed with the budget hearing action so it's clear to the public what may happen, but it can be included.
Okay, I think we have time to add it if need be or, okay, yeah.
So does that need to be a standalone resolution or will the budget hearing resolution? I can do either or probably be easier to a standalone and more clear.
Let me look into that and I'll let you know.
It's going to be a standalone.
Okay, it'd probably be standalone according to Ms. Grant. So I hope that helps and any other questions before I open it to public or comments? All right, anyone from the board? Okay, so I'll open it up to the public and it looks like we have someone. If you come up, state your name and we'll start your three minutes and go from there. I see a hand up in the Zoom room, so. We'll let Joan go first.
Joan Moss, I have been really interested in the sheriff's department through the years. I want to ask a couple of tough questions. I want to know if there have been any deaths attributed to the deputies? If you've had any deaths in the last year, dying or being shot? And how many of the people retiring are disabled?
Is your question, how many deputies have been shot or have the deputies shot anybody?
Scary.
Pardon me?
I think she's attributing it to injuries, deaths, things like that, I think is what she's.
Employees that have died?
Yeah.
And Ronnie Warren. A couple of years. Or in employees, no?
All right. I think, let's see, I think we have someone on Zoom, 707-281-6205. If you can unmute, state your name for the record and we will start your three minutes.
Good morning. Good morning, this is Bart Levinson, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much. I, I'm not sure I'm going to know how to ask this question correctly, so excuse me if I got a little mixed up. But what I want to know, Sheriff, you mentioned that you might have to pull the officers that you have available for marijuana enforcement. What I want to know is what is the number that you need that is healthy to sustain our current marijuana industry and we can't ignore it, our illegal marijuana industry? What is the difference between the numbers of officers that you need, the numbers of officers that you have and the number of officers that you might have to because of your current difficulties curtail further?
Thank you for that question, Bart. The numbers that will need to be fully functioning and not be diverting resources into the jail would be 34 deputy sheriff corrections and the number of dispatch would be eight dispatchers. And those are bare minimums.
Need 34 officers for marijuana management?
No, I need 34 deputy sheriff corrections to be hired at the jail so I can divert my resources away from the jail, back out into patrol, back out into school resources and back out to marijuana. My, my staffing levels with the deputy sheriff, the patrol deputy sheriff series are at, at a okay level right now. That's not where I'm having the, the problems. The problems are caused because people are being diverted from their normal assigned duties to cover the staffing challenges that we have at the jail.
And what is the staffing that you need out on the street? Just so the public can have a perspective. I hear you say 34 are needed in corrections.
What, when I started working here, our staffing levels on the street where we had six, six people assigned to patrol on each shift, we had six plus a sergeant. So there was four deputy sheriffs that were assigned to specific beats. We had two cover deputy sheriffs, one to work North County, one to work South County and one supervisor. So for patrol alone, that's 28. We could use another five or six in investigations, two more in marijuana, two more in roadmap task force and another five in bailiffs.
All right. Thank you for answering those questions.
Currently.
I think, I don't, I think you've got the answers to your questions. I think we're at the three minutes. You know, and I encourage public to always ask questions. I just like to highlight this because in my town halls, this happens as well when the sheriff's there. But some of these folks that are conducting illegal grows and they watch these meetings. They understand these numbers, they know, they strategize. And so I just encourage always ask your questions, but at the same time, it might help sometimes to just reach out to the sheriff on the side directly and talk about this. That way we're not giving a roadmap to some of the criminal activity, if that makes any sense. Any other questions from the public? I see, no, that's the same hand. So I don't see any other hands up, so I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. And I think we have a consensus on the direction for next week during the budget hearings.
Yes.
Does that, does that work for you, for everyone here?
Thank you. I have a lot of thanks to give. My, my staff that's joining me here in the room, Chief Rob Howe, the board supervisors for the support. And this is extremely challenging and I'm hopeful that this, this gives us some progress. And I also want to give a big thanks out to our staff that's been working during these tough conditions. It's just getting harder and harder and hopefully there's some relief insight.
Only request, just working closely with CAO to make sure that what we bring back next, you know, we can, we can make the changes that we need to, so.
Thank you.
All right, Sergeant Drury, Captain Taylor, Sheriff Martin and Lauren, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll close this item and I'll entertain a quick break. I think we need a break, so we will come back at 10:50 and then we'll move forward with our 6.7 and we'll go from there. Thank you very much. All right, looks like we're ready. And so with that, we'll move on to our next item, which is a 6.7 continued from August 30th, 2022. Hearing on account and proposed assessment for 11630 Barrel Way, Clear Lake Oaks, property owner Aura Thomas, APN 03526233. And with that, we have Community Development Director, Mariaa Turner and Code Enforcement Manager, Marcus Beltramo. And so we will go ahead and also see if Aura is on the line so that that way we can swear everybody in and go from there.
Aura, are you there? Are you able to talk?
I am.
Okay.
I am.
All right, so with your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right.
Good morning, Mariaa Turner, Director, Community Development. The item you had before you today originally came before the board for consideration on August 30th. The board noted typographical errors in the last and final notice specific to the address of the property. And there were also requests for more information regarding the process for our notice of violation and administrative penalties. So the item was continued to today for staff to correct those typos and provide information regarding both the processes currently for administrative penalties as well as when we are able to get a third-party collection agency up and running with us. So with that, I will turn it over to our cannabis, our, no, sorry, code enforcement manager.
Yes. Thank you. Good morning to the board. My name's Marcus Beltramo. And again, we come back before the board to clarify some issues or concerns in the preceding hearing. The steps that we took to correct it is we did go out and issue a new last and final notice. This is not a formal notice. This is a, more of a courtesy or informal letter letting them know that we are going to take an action. We corrected the error of the property address. We did provide that to the property owner. That was on, I believe, September 1st, 2022. And she, we provided that. I have copies here if the board would like to see.
We have them.
The notice of assessment issued for this hearing and the last and final notice. There's three there.
All right, thank you.
So I believe we corrected the issues that were of concerns to the board in the prior hearing. And now we would like to, staff would like to recommend the approval of a lien to be recorded against this property in the amount of $17,493.43.
All right, any questions from the board? Let's see, Mrs. Palma or Aura Palma, did you have anything to add to this or?
Well, as I previously stated, the abatement was required because for a two-month period at minimum, I had squatters at my property that the sheriff's department went by and told them that they could not ask them to leave because of COVID. And so basically they did whatever they wanted. I didn't have any sheriff's deputies that would come to the house and advise them to not fill my swimming pool full of trash, not dump off inordinate stacks of tires. None of that was happening. So I feel like the county bears a legal responsibility, at least in some degree, for allowing the situation to get to the place that it did. I know that I do hold ultimate responsibility as a property owner, but I do feel like that needs to be stated. I also feel like the movement to assess administrative penalties is punitive. And I feel, feel targeted. So that's really all I have to say about this at this time.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, any other comments from the board or from staff at all? And I do need to open it up to the public or I think so on this one. So is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this that's already been sworn in or hasn't been or would like to be? And I'm not seeing any others, so I will bring it back to the board for action. I can pass the gavel, do it since it's in my district. Mokes got it?
Yeah, I think I, let me make sure I get everything here. I move the board of supervisors confirm the assessment of $17,493.43 and direct staff to record a notice of lien against the property. The cost of abatement services are $15,423.17 and the administrative costs in this case are $2,070.26.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much for this and go ahead.
There was a second prong. There was a request for an update to, or a direction or guidance to issue a notice of violation and to start assessing administrative penalties. And we put together just a brief PowerPoint on that.
Okay.
So again, this is a new action that we are taking. Again, we're all familiar with the property. We cited several violations of the Lake County Code and also of the International Property Maintenance.
Um, I think we, do we have?
We both recognized it simultaneously. It's a presentation, there's no presentation that's listed on.
Microphone.
There's no presentation for this that's listed on the agenda item, which is just the hearing on account and proposed assessment. I mean, the department can provide you some information about this, but it's, it's, the public has no way of knowing that this might come up. And so you certainly could not take any action. And even discussion should be curtailed to just some, perhaps some very basic information. It can however, be its own separate presentation at the next, on the next board agenda for your board's consideration.
Would you like to put it on next week's agenda?
We're happy to just give a general overview of the process of notice of violation just to inform the board since that's what was one of your questions last time.
Okay.
So the general process is basically we go out, we verify that there's a violation. We then issue a notice of violation citing those violations. We serve it upon the, uh, property owner. They have thirty days to correct the violation. If they don't correct it within that period, then we're in a position to, uh, issue an administrative, uh, citation.
All right. I think that's something, that's something that will, uh, be beneficial in situations as such and others. So thank you for bringing that to us. And, uh, if you would like to do a presentation, uh, on this even more in depth, then we can look to put this on a future agenda item, so. And thank you for, uh, for the work on that as well. So is there not any? Go ahead. Thank you. Oh, yeah, there we go. So I'll, uh, close that. And so we'll move on to our six point eight. Um, continuation from, or continued from August ninth, twenty twenty-two, public hearing consideration of draft ordinance adding Article ten to Chapter five of the Lake County Code and adopting a water efficient landscape ordinance. And so with that, Community Development Director Maria Turner and, uh, I don't know if William Collins, but I see Jack here, so, yeah.
Yes, our Plans Examiner, Jack Smalley, will also be joining me. So Johanna is, uh, starting the PowerPoint presentation. It should just say Muelo, yeah, B O S Muelo. The draft ordinance for the California Model Water Efficient Landscape came before your board on August ninth. During the discussion with the board, um, there were questions about what this ordinance would look like played out in real life in rural area appropriate to Lake County, as well as discussion of, um, possibly adding gray water regulations to the ordinance. The item was continued to today for staff to do additional research. And in fact, the gray water portion, um, actually is going to take additional research further. Our chief building official has been working with environmental health to sort of figure out the pluses and minuses of implementing that in a future ordinance. So today, we're just talking about the, the Muelo ordinance, the California Model Water Efficient Landscape. Super duper. Thanks. Okay, great. So just as a, a brief recap, this Muelo ordinance, um, is part of an enaction in nineteen ninety-three, which was part of the nineteen ninety Water Conservation and Landscaping Act. It focuses on water conservation and the, the driver behind it was that in urban areas, more than half of the water usage was dedicated to landscapes. Um, I don't know about you, but I've seen a number of yards since I've lived in California that people think they live over, you know, in New Jersey or something. And so they're using all this water, um, to try to capture what they were hoping to have in their yards. But given our Mediterranean climate and given our ongoing drought, it's not sustainable in this area. And so that was enacted in nineteen ninety-three, but then also during the drought of two thousand fifteen, um, the governor issued an executive order to update those standards. So it focuses on low, uh, let's see, get to what it focuses on in a minute. It does apply to residential, commercial, and industrial development. In Lake County specifically, we do not require landscaping for single-family or two-family residential development. And so it does, uh, in our zoning ordinance, we do have Article forty-one that contains regulations for required landscaping, but that only applies to, um, the R three zone, which is our multi-family residential, and then going forward into our commercial and industrial manufacturing zones. It does not apply to R one, R two, which is our single and, um, two-family residential, nor does it apply to rural lands or rural residential, unless there's a commercial development that might trigger it. Let's see. Also, we do, as a department, we have annual reporting requirements to the state regarding any permitting for Muelo that we do that year. This slide came right out of the state's, uh, website, um, just showing that the focus is to reduce the amount of water consumption for, uh, the landscaping with use of like mulch or rocks or things that fill in that don't require water but can hold water in the soil, as well as promoting, um, the habitat that helps pollinators. So not only are we reducing the water usage, but we're maximizing sort of the, the benefit of that water by encouraging, um, plants that'll, that'll be healthy for our pollinators. This is a copy of the application that our developers would encounter. Since we do not have Muelo requirements triggered most often, people would fill out that first blue box, the property information, then the applicant information, then they'd get down to the, does your project include landscaping? And that first box says, no, doesn't include landscaping, and then they're done. People who need to move on forward would experience additional, or they would have to answer additional questions that are diving into the type of plants, the amount of landscaping, your irrigation details and things like that. It gets pretty detailed. And, um, Jack can answer any questions that you might have about those details as well. Projects that require landscaping will usually see both a planting plan and a landscaping plan. This is going to show us the type of plants they intend, um, to install, where they're located. And we're able to check and see, are these water, are these drought resistant plants? You know, what kind of, what sort of shade canopy are they going to provide? Here's just a typical irrigation plan, shows you areas of imper, uh, what's it called? Impermeable surface, like sidewalks, um, as well as, uh, structures and then areas where we can anticipate water can soak into the ground. So I inserted just a couple pictures so the board could kind of see what water, um, efficient landscapes look like. And we are happy, oh, by the way, the adoption of the ordinance is required by the state. One more thing of the state sending us that, you know, they're like, here you go, no, no choice, why don't you go ahead and integrate it? And in fact, it already is integrated into our green, our Cal Green Building Standards and our Title twenty-four. So we're already complying with this. Happy to address any questions.
Who, who fills out the, who does the, the planning? So is it an engineer? Who, who has to fill out the yard plan, the Muelo?
It would be the designer of the project that would have to be.
So.
Generally speaking, it would be the engineer that does the design.
So someone's building their own home, they don't, they're doing it on their own, they're going to have to hire now?
There is a certain level of, uh, professional design that's required anyway by the code, even by Lake County Code.
But typically someone building. Their own house on their own vacant property won't trigger a need for landscaping. Like, single-family residential and two-family residential won't trigger that. But people who are coming to develop multi-family residential units, that's when it gets started.
Changing for those. All right. Okay.
Just a quick question. I know that the state's kind of mandating this, right? And so, uh, is there funding opportunities that they're offering as well? Or I just had to ask. But, um, I'll guess I'll open it up for public input. Uh, is there anybody in the public that would come on up? State your name for the record and, uh, we'll give you three minutes.
While they're walking up, I am assuming this is a requirement that they always say on the bill, you know, this is one of those mandated things that has no funding tied to it. So we add it to that list of ongoing mandated, non-funded things that we try to collect from the state and we never get.
Thank you.
Joan Moss, I have a technical question to ask because I really don't know. I've heard various opinions. The big logs that are left by the vegetation management people, some of them have laid there for a year. They're in people's yards on Wildcat Road.
Joan.
And I want to know, I have a technical question I want to ask.
But this isn't about vegetation.
Do they gather water? Some, some tree management company told the homeowner that the logs were sucking up water from the ground. I just want to know if you knew anything about that.
Joan, that, that doesn't pertain to this, so.
But he's, he is the official in charge. He would know.
I understand that you can ask them that probably after this because that doesn't pertain to this ordinance. So, um, we'll go ahead and, uh, see if there's anyone else with public input. I'm not seeing any hands up, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt ordinance, um, adding Article five to Chapter five, I'm sorry, Article ten to Chapter five of the Lake County Code and adopting a water efficient landscape ordinance in order to achieve compliance with state law.
Is this a first and second reading?
Yes, it is.
So we're just offering the ordinance today, right? No?
Oh.
Today, you're waiving reading title only.
Oh, okay.
Having it read in full and having it read in title only, and then you are off, you are advancing the ordinance five days, which will be to the twentieth.
All right, so.
I'm offering the ordinance?
I think we'll waive it first to waive the.
First, a motion to waive reading of the ordinance and have it read in title only.
So moved.
So move? Second?
All right. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then the.
She'll read it real quick.
Yeah, the title is an ordinance adding Article ten to Chapter five of the Lake County Code and adopting a water efficient landscape ordinance.
And then a motion to advance the ordinance to, uh, September twentieth for a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then I think it was the last one is the offer, no, that's next week. Okay.
That's next week. You're done for now.
All right. Well, thank you very much, uh, for, for this. We'll see you next week to go forward from there. All right. So it looks like we have our six point nine public hearing, uh, for the consideration of the, of the vacation of a portion of a roadway known as Forest Lake Drive, C R number one twenty-eight in the Cobb area, adopt resolution vacating a portion of Forest Lake Drive, C R number one twenty-eight, and accept the irrevocable offer to dedication. With that, it looks like we have, uh, Public Works Director Scott DeLeon on and, uh, we'll give the floor to you.
Great. Good morning, board. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Scott DeLeon, Public Works Director. Uh, apologize for not being, uh, able to join you today. I'm just getting over COVID and I'll be working from home for hopefully one more day. Uh, today's item is for your board's consideration of the vacation of a portion of roadway known as Forest Lake Drive in the Cobb Mountain area. Uh, the request to vacate the roadway was made by Mr. David Wignall, who is the owner of the former Forest Lake Resort and the adjoining properties to Forest Lake Drive. And his request was made in accordance with the provisions of the Streets and Highways Code. I'm not sure if Mr. Wignall is present today to speak to his justifications, uh, but we summarized them in our memo, uh, to your board as the following, absence of public necessity, uh, persistent theft and vandalism, personal, family, and public safety, uh, concerns, and the associated financial burdens. Little history of Forest Lake Drive, uh, is as follows. Forest Lake Drive was originally the state highway over Cobb Mountain. Uh, it was relinquished to the county for use as a county road by the State Division of Highways in nineteen sixty-three, uh, when the state constructed a new alignment of Highway one seventy-five. In nineteen sixty-seven, Forest Lake Drive was shown on the county maintained road list and has remained in the county maintained system to date. Some additional details about, uh, this proposed vacation are as follows. Uh, the proposed vacation of Forest Lake Drive extends from the intersection of Brookside Drive at the south, uh, and extends to the State Highway one seventy-five at the north end. Uh, Brookside Drive will remain a public road, uh, for access to the residents of the community of Whispering Pines. Uh, there are two parcels at the north end of Forest Lake Drive that are shown on the map that was attached, uh, with, uh, our packet, and they have access directly from Forest Lake Drive. And as part of this vacation proposal, Mr. Wignall will be offering back to the county an irrevocable offer of dedication for approximately two hundred feet of the north end of Forest Lake Drive, which will provide permanent access to those lots. The vacation of the entire roadway with a small, small portion, uh, being offered back for dedication was done on purpose, uh, as it will remove the county's maintenance responsibility for the entirety of Forest Lake Drive, with Mr. Wignall agreeing to perform any maintenance on that portion, uh, that is being, uh, dedicated back for public use. Uh, the planning commission considered this request for vacation in July of this year and found it to be in conformance with the Lake County General Plan. And our staff has reviewed the documents associated with the proposal and finds them to be acceptable. And we recommend that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution of vacation for Forest Lake Drive and accept the irrevocable offer of dedication. And with that, I'll be happy to, uh, try and answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Any questions from the board?
Uh, no, but Mr. Wignall is here.
All right. So, uh, go ahead and, uh, open it up to the public and offer if, uh, Mr. Wignall, you'd like to come up and say anything?
Hello, David Wignall. I'm the applicant and owner of the property. Um, I actually, that was a great summary. I have not much to add unless you have questions of me.
Well, I just have a couple of questions and we've spoken about this of many times and it wasn't in the staff report that we had seen before because it was, um, submitted in twenty fifteen, I think. So there is a church, um, and the gate will be, which side of the gate, or which side of the church will the gate be on?
The church is located on my property and has been for seventy-five years, I think. It's actually an outdoor chapel. I've spoken with folks at the, the parish and assured them that while the gate will be, um, outside, um, they will have access to the church and parking, um, whenever they need it.
So will they have a key so they can open?
Yes.
When they have an event?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Because that, that was one of the big questions that the community had. And then also, um, in the original report, you, it states that you were closing it for, um, a family compound and you have a different intent now. Is that correct?
Our plans have changed. Um, we would really like to bring the resort back, um, to what I remember it was back in the sixties, which was a, uh, family oriented resort. Kind of, you know, if you can remember the fifties and sixties, uh, there wasn't much to do other than hang out at the pool and fish in the lake and, uh, just have a good time. That's our intention now. And it's, it's one of the reasons that the closure of the road is, um, takes on greater importance because, um, without it, bringing the resort back would, would be difficult. So, um, we would like, and following this proceeding and hopefully the closure of the road, we will be moving forward with whatever we need to do to, to, uh, get all of our plans approved. So that's the change in, in direction, which I think is for the better.
And it is a, a place where a lot of people enjoy walking. And so will pedestrians still be welcome to walk there?
Yes, um, absolutely. We've spoken to a number of neighbors who walk through the area and they're very respectful of our property and, you know, our personal safety as well as public safety. And for those who, um, fit that category, we're happy to have them walk through. I know they've been walking through there for years and years.
And just so you two are aware, the road, um, it's sort of parallel to the highway. So people will, you, like, try and go through there really quickly and pass people on the highway and, um, vandalize this building. So it is a pretty significant. highway and vandalize this building. So it is a pretty significant safety issue. And as long as the public is still able to walk and enjoy that spot, I'm, I'm fine with it.
And yes, they will, the public has, will have access.
Let's see if there's any other public input, because I think you've answered the questions, and thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I don't see anybody in the chambers with their hands up, and I'm looking online. I don't see anything there, so I will bring it back to the board for action.
So do I just, do I offer the dedication, or do I, how, how do I do this?
You have a resolution that is vacating a, a portion of Forest Lake Drive. The one question that you may want to ask before you, before you do that, the, the resolution itself will vacate a portion and should accept the irrevocable offer of dedication all in the one document. There is, the Board is making findings of general plan conformity. Since the Community Development Director is here, you may want to, to ensure that the change of purpose does not affect the Board's ability to make that finding today.
Thank you.
Hello, Yuraya Turner, Community Development Director. Actually, no, the, the change in use and keeping it open as a resort is thrilling to planning because if he had, since it's its original use, it's zoned properly for that use. And so if he wanted to just close it to the public and use it as a family resort or just private use, any future building permits would probably prompt a zoning change for that. So this is great. This works out wonderful. Thanks.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Okay, so I offer the resolution?
Mm-hmm.
Resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Thank you.
Great.
And that's, that's, yeah, the second, I think she said, takes, takes care of it. So.
Well, let, excuse me, just a moment, Supervisors. You may want to ask Mr. DeLeon if he needed any separate.
Director DeLeon, did you need anything?
We included, yeah, we included two documents, the resolution that vacated Forest Lake, and then we also included the irrevocable offer of dedication. And so I think perhaps just for, if County Council agrees, taking action to accept the irrevocable offer.
Okay.
I think would maybe overkill, but would certainly complete the item.
So just, you need to entertain a motion to accept.
Just a motion to approve, and I think it's the last page, irrevocable offer of dedication.
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and motion carries. Thank you very much, and thank you, Director DeLeon.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's see here. And then the next item, timed item is at 1:00 PM, so we'll go ahead and take on some non-timed items. And we'll start with 7.2. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Consideration of the following Advisory Board appointments: Lake County Animal Control, Lucerne Area Town Hall, Lake County Mental Health Board, and West Region Town Hall. And I had to, I talked with the Lucerne Town Hall, Area Town Hall, and the applicant that we have has turned in the application, however, has only attended one meeting according to the bylaws. So they're going to wait until she attends the second meeting and then open it up for others to apply and, and then come back with that later. So we'll wait on that one, but the others, I think, are okay. In the list, of course, yeah.
No questions for me.
No questions? Any questions?
Uh-uh.
All right, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item, 7.2? All right, bring it back to the board for action. And so we do these one at a time, I think. So we'll start with Lake County Animal Control Advisory Board.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to appoint Kendall Neighbors to the Lake County Animal Control Board.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. To all in favor? Aye. Opposed, and motion carries. We'll move on to Lake County Mental Health Advisory Board.
Mr. Chair, I move that we appoint Melanie Lim.
Oh, no, that's going to wait. We're going to wait on that one.
Oh, that one. Oh, sorry. Okay, so then Lee Zaladon to the Lake County Mental Health Advisory Board?
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then last is the West Region Town Hall.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Melinda Wright to the Western, no, let me get it right here, Western Region Town Hall.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, and motion carries. So we're done with 7.2. Let's see, and next, sorry, is the 7.3: Consideration of Update of 2022 Committee Assignments for Members of the Board of Supervisors. And so with that, I'll give the floor to Cao Parker.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Previously, the Board made several committee appointments with the vacancy of former Supervisor Tina Scott. There was one outstanding question related to the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council to see if she was eligible to be, to remain appointed. Actually, a Board, a Board of Supervisor has to, Supervisor Board has to be a member. She can be a member of the public, but not, this particular vacancy requires a supervisor to be appointed. And this committee meets monthly on the third Thursdays at noon, just for your information.
All right. And so are we looking to make that choice today, or just, was that just an update?
No, you can make that choice today, or you can, we can forward it to next week with, with the full Board present, if you'd like.
Would you like to do that, or do you?
I mean.
Just trying to think through.
There's no possible way I can do it.
Yeah.
I know for me it'd be a conflict. So if need be, we could just carry this over till next week with Supervisor Sabatia here and.
Yeah, if we could push it one more week, just so I can check.
So I'll go ahead and open it up to the public if there's anyone that would like to comment on this item. I'm not seeing any hands raised in Zoom or even in the chambers, so we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board and see if we can just put, push this forward to next week.
Yes.
That way we can have a full Board and see. All right. And so with that, we will go to calendars, and so we'll start with Supervisor Simon.
So we've got the Board meeting finishing up today. Have tomorrow LTA APC meeting in the morning, and then later that afternoon have, I've been asked to attend a, on the 14th with Senator Guire at, I think it's Starbucks, right, in Clear Lake. He's doing a meeting from four to around five, I think is what the schedule is. So he'll be participating in that. And then later that evening, we have the CWPP governance. So I'm going to make sure I got the time to get here in between that, so that's Wednesday. Thursday, right now, I know there's the Best Fits Grants Meeting that I have on the calendar. Got a couple of other meetings, and then Friday morning, back on track now. Susan, we're on for Friday morning, correct?
Yes, sir.
9:00 AM. And hopefully I'll be able to make both the planning meeting and the staff tree meeting this weekend. Saturday, we'll be doing a tribal event at our facility, and then on Sunday, don't have anything. We'll be attending too late Friday night. The high school football season is here, so we'll be attending a football game Friday night. And then back here on Monday, we have the Risk Reduction Authority meeting happening, and also the CMAT Reporting Committee meeting happening on Monday, the 19th, and then back here on the 20th.
All right. All right, Supervisor Pisca?
Well, I, it's, I do want to say that yesterday during the, we had the Valley Fire Anniversary, and Chief Duncan and I commemorated the morning by filling up the helipod that is stationed on Cobb. And so that was, you know, it's a hard day for all of us to, but be able to take that moment and know that we're doing something positive, adding another resource. And that just, it speaks of the collaboration of so many different volunteers and professionals. I just want to give a really big shout out to Chief Wink for his innovation. This is a vision that he's had for a long time, and he brings a lot of innovation to our district and our county. And Chief Duncan just pushed hard, hard, getting that installed through the heat, and he was out there every single day. And that meant a lot to me, and I think it meant a lot to the community. And again, it's just a hard day, we all recognize, but I, I also, I went all around a lot this weekend. I was at the Big Valley Small Farm Tours throughout Kelseyville, and although none of them are technically in my district, right on the edge, it's a really big deal to have so many of these local farms doing absolutely unique, wonderful things. And Peace and Plenty Farms is in Sunset Magazine, so that's another accolade. And then after that, my family and I went to the Scots Valley big time and spent many hours there. And really, just felt really honored that we are welcome there to participate. And then yesterday was Dia de la Independencia in Kelseyville on Main Street, another, like, really amazing, wonderful cultural event that we have in our community. And I know that took a lot of planning and effort by all the Kelseyville Business Association and all the other groups that lent a hand. But the weekend before that, I was at Fair for several days, and again, you know, wonderful event for our county, for our youth. I wasn't able to make the auction, which unfortunately I wanted to, but I, I know that was another big moment for a lot of those youths who put so much time and energy into raising their animals in the community that comes out to support them. So that was the last couple weekends I've had. I just want to give a shout out to all of those really wonderful things that we have going on in our community. Tomorrow, agenda review, and then we've got a two-hour block that we're working on, the Climate Action Grant, trying to push that. We've got three more, three more weeks until that's due, or two and a half weeks, so we're just getting everything we can in order, getting, getting everything in line for that so we can deliver that on October 7th. Then coffee with the Senator with Supervisor Simon in Clear Lake, then coming here for the CWPP workshop, government workshop. Thursday, Best Fits Grants Meeting, and then I have a couple hours blocked out with Assistant CAO Stephen Carter to do budget review. Then I've got the kids' open house and a CAC meeting that evening. Figure those two things out together. Friday, I am going to have to miss the three tree, two tree meetings we have, plus our Home Hardening Meeting because I have a CSAC training that I'm doing online. I do have a, a meeting with some constituents that I think I have to reschedule so that we can, so I can have some time with Matthew to work on more requirements for that big grant. Saturday morning, I'm meeting with my Planning Commissioner to learn how to drive a tractor so I can be in the parade, Pear Festival Parade. It's been a really long time since I've driven a tractor, so that's what I'm doing that morning. Then the wine auction dinner is that evening, which is a huge event for our county. We're one of the biggest fundraisers that we have, so I'm happy to participate there. I really hope Sunday I have nothing to do for the first time in a long time. Monday morning, I have my meeting with Susan, and then the Risk Reduction afternoon of meetings, which the CMAT and then the RRA later. And then back on Tuesday.
All right. So I'll start out with giving a report on my last week. I went out on Tuesday with CC4C to clean up the sulfur and North Drive area in, in my district. I have to say, it's, we got, we do have a flock camera in that area. However, what's frustrating is, is that it still, it still continues to happen, and it's, it's over the side of the hill. Like, you have to actually, like, slide down to get some of this garbage, and it's just frustrating. But this group goes out monthly. They even go out in other areas, but monthly they dedicate their time to this area. So strategizing on some of that, but also helping pick up that garbage, getting down there, and they expose themselves to things like poison oak and things. So I just really want to give them recognition for what they do on that. So the next day, we had the earth meeting, which was important because the EPA Superfund staff came out and talked about that project and gave a, you know, a report to the community, and I know they'll be coming in the near future to talk to us. And so just wanted to highlight that that was a very productive meeting. Thursday, I was at the Blue Ribbon Committee meeting, which we did get that letter approved to, for support, and went through a lot of the activities this year to produce the final report that will probably be voted on in December. So that'll go forward for the future years of funding and projects that will come along with that. And then Friday, I was at AgVenture, and interestingly enough, we talked, it was focused on wine. So a lot, a lot of wineries, and we went out to these, these, where they grow, and heard a lot of their information and the struggles that they're having and what they do. And so it was really, a really good deep dive for me. I was supposed to go a couple years back. I'm not sure if it was the COVID or whatever, but I'm pretty sure that you two have already went. And so, so now I'm learning, the last meeting that we had, the session one, was more on, like, the pear farms and things like that. So it was really, it's really educating. And what was really even more awesome is that in the beginning of the meeting, Marina Delgianis gave a report on water resources, and is like, oh, it was awesome. I wish that everyone can get this report to understand the overview of what the, what is it, what it entails for that department, what they do, what their staffing levels are, all of the mandates that are intact, and how dangerous Bogomussel and how vulnerable we are to that. I know that there's a lot, a lot of times people will state that we spend a lot of time on that, well, for good reason. If that happens, there's no going back. So I just wanted to highlight that and give a, give my recognition to that as well. Community Visioning Forum was last night. We had a really productive meeting as well, discussed, went through sort of breakup groups so we can focus on different ideals. One is health, one is, I want to say race and law enforcement, and then the other one is education, and I think that was the biggest focus. Wanted to highlight that Superintendent Brock Falkenberg came and gave a really, really good support system to that, and we just did basically a deep dive and kind of strategized on how we're going to go about these visioning forums. So that was a productive meeting as well. And so this week, I'll be at the RCRC Annual Meeting. I've been collaborating, collecting along with staff here for an annual basket that we give out. They do like a donation auction at this function, and what, what we try to do is gather all of the different wineries, different hotels, different restaurants, establishments, things of that nature, and we try to collaborate that. And if someone does a good bid on that, whoever goes, comes to our area and enjoys Lake County in that aspect. And what's interesting is I speak to a lot of other supervisors, and when they travel through, they travel through Lake County, wherever they go. A lot of them like to go to Fort Bragg, so they go right through, through us. So just wanted to state that. That was, that's going to be something that's going to go till Friday, and then I'll be back Friday. And then Saturday, we have the Coastal Cleanup. There's, it's going to be at the Lucerne Harbor Park in Lucerne, Robyn Slough in Nice, Library Park in Lakeport, Highland Springs Recreation Area in Lakeport, and Canockdye CrossFit, Austin Park and Beach in Clear Lake. And so that's going to start at 9:00 on that day, and so looking forward to being a part of that as well. And then, of course, Robinson Rancheria, and I'm pretty sure that Middletown's having their Native American Days on Saturday as well.
Yeah, Saturday, yep.
So I might try to, you know, get on over there, too, because I've been, I've only been to, I have actually missed last weekends, and it was unfortunate. But let's see, Monday, I have a meeting with. I have a meeting with CIO Parker and then another meeting with ACU Stephen. So then I'll be back here on the 20th for our meeting and we'll go from there. So.
Mr. Chair, I missed something on Friday. It's not getting on me. It wasn't on here. Well, it is. But I have the Workforce Alliance in North Bay Meeting on Friday.
Yeah, I can't go.
Yeah, you're not going. So I will be in attendance there. At the last meeting, I was voted as the vice chair, so someone else didn't show up. So that's where we are. But I am I'll be attending that. That starts at 9:00 AM. So I'll be missing the other meetings at this point. So I just had it all stacked up there.
Okay, so Coastal Cleanup, didn't have that on my calendar, but now I do. So I'm going to do that, too.
It's on Saturday.
I think I'll go to Highland Springs.
Okay.
I don't think there's one in my district, is there?
Um, let's see, I have it right here. And the what it says is
It sounds like.
Then the nearest one, I think, is Highland Springs.
Yeah, we did Kelsey Creek last year, but.
Well, Canokdi CrossFit, for some reason, there's one there. Does that make sense?
Oh, that must be the creek.
Yeah.
I'll check in with Marina.
Yeah. And then, so yeah, and then I did did not get to mention that there is a Lucerne Area Town Hall Thursday at 6:00 PM, and it's usually at the Castle and also via Zoom. So didn't get to add that, but I will. And so with that, we've covered everything except for our 6.10, which will be at 1:00. So with that, looks like we can entertain a lunch break until that until around what? We want to start at 10:00 before or 5 minutes before?
Whatever Sam needs.
Yeah. How much time do you need to to prepare before we come back into session at 1:00, Sam? 10 minutes. So let's let's come let's be back here at 10 minutes before. So 12:50. Yeah. All right. So with that, we will break for lunch. Thank you. All right. Welcome back from the lunch break. We're going to continue on to our next item, the 6.10, Discussion and Consideration of PG&E's Vegetation Management Programs. Supervisor, Vice Chair Pyska, didn't know if you wanted to take the lead on this or if you had someone you were going to introduce.
Well, yeah, we have some representatives from PG&E, so you can come up here if you'd like. You can come
Come on up, yeah.
Right here, in the front. In these chairs.
You have to come around from that side, probably.
Got the microphone right there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
And there's one microphone there. You got to kind of slide it and have it right in front of you when you're talking. Figure we'll let you know before Sam comes out and moves it for you. Try and have it right in front of you when you're talking. Just slide it back and forth.
Very good.
And do we have Melinda on Zoom? Is she feeling well enough?
I know she was planning to join us.
Okay. So the reason that, oh, actually, do you want to give your names for the record?
Sure. Well, first of all, thank you for having us. My name is Matt Leedy. I'm a colleague of Melinda's. I'm in Government Affairs, but assigned specifically to our veg management programs, including some of the things I'll review today, be it routine, EVM, and wood management. And then with me, I have Rich Noonan. He's a Public Safety Specialist and Wildfire Operations. I'll let you say hi and introduce yourself, Rich.
Yes, thanks for the opportunity today to engage with you. It's nice to finally meet you in person. As Matt said, Rich Noonan, Public Safety Specialist. I have Mendocino and Lake County. My background prior to that, eight years in the Navy and then 24 with CalFire.
Great. So the reason I asked you here is, you know, we're dealing with catastrophic tree mortality throughout the county. And we started having conversations last winter with PG&E about the planned vegetation management that you were going to be doing and the wood hall. And, you know, back in the winter, I was pushing really hard for the wood hall when there were 600 trees that had been identified and leaving 600 trees on the ground and, you know, what that would do for the safety of our community. And then and then PG&E decided to do the wood hall or included it in that program. And then after about six months of work, and now that's coming to an end, and it's just going to put our community at risk. It's, you know, we're in the middle of fire season. We're in this incredible dry drought period. And our situation with tree mortality is worse than it was last winter. So I think this is just where we'll start the conversation today.
Okay, very good. We had a slide presentation prepared about our various programs and our work in general. Would you like me to speak to that? Or would you prefer?
Well, you did include the slide presentation in the package, so you're welcome to go over that.
Okay, if it pleases.
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah. Somebody bring that up?
It's on the package.
Oh, it's in the package?
Yeah.
Okay, I will.
And I'll just while we're waiting, I know that I think a couple of weeks back, we had they had an RCRC meeting where CEO Patty, was there Patty Pope?
Patty Poppy.
Poppy, yes. And so and that was a real big topic. Topic of discussion was what we're talking about today. A lot of different supervisors had those same concerns. So just glad that we're talking about it.
Very good. Yeah, so I'm on mine. Thank you. You got it. Thank you. Sorry. We go to the next slide and the one after. Okay, very good. As I alluded to, as part of our ongoing efforts to prevent wildfires, we are conducting annual and additional inspections to remove dead, dying, diseased, or defective trees that could harm power lines or equipment. In this slide, the first panel refers to our routine vegetation management work, which occurs annually along all electric distribution power lines. I'm able to navigate it. Is it just the arrow key?
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Getting back to routine vegetation management, like I said, this occurs annually and involves meeting important state vegetation and fire safety standards. These standards include for high fire threat districts, maintaining a minimum clearance of four feet around power lines. You'll see that in the first set of circles around those crossarms, and a minimum clearance of 12 feet or more at the time of pruning. And this is to ensure that we're able to maintain that four feet clearance year round. Routine vegetation management also includes cutting down dead, diseased, defective, or dying trees with the potential to fall and strike the power lines. The next panel, go ahead.
I just have a question about this. So I sometimes I see trees that are just topped at that four foot. Wouldn't it be better to just bring get the whole tree down rather than like a pine tree or some kind of conifer that is not going to do much as a half of a tree under power lines? We see this a lot.
I understand what you're saying. I believe the strategy is if the tree can survive being topped, and many can, that we leave those intact as long as they are no longer a threat to our power lines.
But then if they do survive and they do thrive, then they're going to grow right back up again. So.
Yes. And that's why we also do off-year vegetation management, referred to as enhanced vegetation management. And I'll talk to that right after the drought and tree mortality response, if that's okay. And then feel free to jump in. The drought and tree mortality program is in response to what you alluded to, Supervisor, the many years of drought that we've experienced, that has weakened trees, and also made them highly susceptible to infect insect infestations, namely the bark beetle. The drought tree mortality response program includes additional inspection of trees along power lines and, again, high fire threat areas with ground patrols and helicopters approximately six months after the annual routine inspections. This also involves cutting down dead, diseased, dying, or defective trees, primarily in areas, again, affected by drought and the bark beetle. The third panel refers to enhanced vegetation management, also in high fire threat areas, that goes above and beyond and expands our risk model for mitigation work that's conducted during drought and tree mortality inspections. Our enhanced vegetation management work exceeds state standards for minimum clearances around power lines. So going above and beyond what you see in the routine vegetation management. And it includes pruning overhanging limbs and branches above power lines. And that you'll see in reference to the purple fuchsia bar there, going all the way up to sky. So that's overhang is the primary difference between EVM and routine vegetation management. Like the other programs, there are additional inspections beyond routine patrols to cut down dead, diseased, dying, or defective trees that could harm power lines or equipment. And it also evaluates the condition of trees that are tall enough to strike the lines or equipment. And on the next slide, I'll talk a little bit about the regulatory requirements that PG&E is legally required to maintain. Forgot I was in charge of this slide. Well, as we're bringing it up, I could talk about the requirements we're required to maintain. We are held to CPUC Commission Order 95, Rule 35, there we go, and California Public Resources Code 4292 and 4293. Also, under Article 12 of the California Constitution, local discretionary authority over public utility projects is preempted by the California Public Utility Commission, the CPUC, and their exclusive jurisdiction. As such, PG&E's vegetation management projects are not subject to local conditional use permits, tree permits, tree removal permits, excuse me, or other similar local discretionary permits. Having said that, PG&E does obtain all necessary ministerial encroachment permits for work being performed in public right-ofways. If you can advance to the next slide. On this slide, this shows our specific work for enhanced vegetation management in Lake County. Melinda, are you on? Would you like to speak to this?
Hi, Matt. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Melinda Rivera. I work in Local Government Affairs for PG&E, for Lake County and for Sonoma County. I'm having some trouble projecting, so I'm going to turn up my volume a little bit. So basically, this slide shows that we have been doing some enhanced vegetation management work in Lake County. We have completed over 364 line miles so far on our circuits. For 2022, what we had planned was to complete almost 81 miles. Thus far, year-to-date, we have completed just over 22 line miles for our work in Lake County. So we do still have quite a bit of work to get through. You can see on this map, we do have some areas highlighted, areas kind of on our Hartley Circuit up there, northwest of Lakeport, areas in Cobb. And then you can see down below, down towards the Napa County line, we also have some areas highlighted, kind of down there off Butts Canyon Road in that area, where we are trying to finish up our enhanced vegetation management work for this year. So this slide is the contact information, and this is specific for wood removal. So we have this phone number here for, and this is something that you as leadership, and once again, many thanks to to all of you as Board of Supervisors, Chair Crandell, and County Administrator Parker, for your leadership in in helping us to work with the County of Lake on vegetation management so that we can mitigate risks around our lines. This is a number that can be distributed as well as an email address. So, excuse me. So we had, given the extent of the tree mortality that Supervisor Pyska referenced earlier in the meeting, we had we had made a commitment about the Cobb area to haul wood. And at that time, we had not, we did not know what the full extent and how much tree mortality would occur. We did have a pause on wood haul earlier, like a couple of months ago, for all of our veg management programs, including our enhanced vegetation management program and our routine work. We are resuming wood haul on all of our programs. So we appreciate that the situation has been dynamic. And so we definitely are sensitive that customers want this wood haul if we're able to do so safely. So please feel free to distribute this information. We definitely want to make this available for, as as Matt referenced, we don't normally do wood haul except for enhanced vegetation management, which is the majority of the trees there in Cobb that are dead and dying. But for those that are not enhanced vegetation management, if there are any customers who would like dead or dying trees that have been cut on their property to have them hauled away, they can still go back and contact this number to request wood removal. If they were declined earlier and we had a pause on wood removal, they can go back and ask to have their property reevaluated. So we did make this exception for Cobb for this year. Again, we don't normally offer wood haul for for programs outside of enhanced vegetation management. But we understand this is an unprecedented event that's impacting Lake County this year. We are open to taking questions at this time.
Well, I sincerely appreciate that it's been reconsidered because it just that was not going to be acceptable for us. But I I'm looking at the map for the enhanced vegetation management, and it doesn't look like that's including the Sota Bay Corridor. And I know that we're experiencing a lot, we're experiencing a lot of tree death in that area. And our emergency is countywide. We did declare the emergency in May for the entire county. And so I just don't know why it's restricted to one area.
Yeah, that is an excellent question, Supervisor Pyska. So basically, you know, we do understand that tree mortality, sorry, hang on just a second. We do understand that tree mortality, that the county has been impacted in various areas, not just in Cobb. However, when we were initially approached by the county, it was specific to the Cobb area. And so the exception we made at that time was for Cobb. At this time, we're not offering this kind of exception and offering wood haul for any areas outside of Cobb, and we're not offering it for other counties that are also experiencing this event as well.
We have representatives from two of our HOAs along the Sota Bay Corridor, and so they can speak to the effect that this is having having on their communities and their residents. And so whenever it's appropriate, Chair Crandell, that they come up and speak to that. I do just, I feel like this is arbitrary, the circle that's been drawn. And, you know, we have to get to the point, get to where the get to the place where where our our whole county can can have this wood haul if if it's needed. This Sota Bay Corridor is one of the top most dangerous evacuation corridors in the state. And to have vegetation and wood and branches, sometimes it takes weeks, sometimes it takes months to clean up in our public right-ofway corridor, that is going to put lives in danger.
All right. I had a question. Who, so it looks like you're considering implementing this again for especially that area, right? That's what that's what I heard. Who conducts the work? Is it just PG&E solely? Do you contract with? Who do you contract with?
We use contractors. Melinda, do you know the specific contractor?
I don't know who is doing wood haul. I can get that information for you for Chair Crandell and Supervisor Pyska and the rest of the board. I don't know. I know that a lot of our routine work is, of course, conducted by Loggers Unlimited, but I don't know if that's the same subcontractor that we'll be using for wood haul. So I apologize. I will find that out and get that information back to the board.
All right. Yeah, because I know that that was a big concern, not just with other counties, but I know with us as well. If it's a very difficult task to obtain for PG&E, maybe contract with local folks that can do the work as well. That way, we can take care of some of these, you know, down trees and whatnot. But at the same time, I do share the same energy and emotion that you have in regards to the full county benefiting from this. I understand it's not done in other counties. However, I think it would be I understand it's not done in other counties, however, I think it would be a good thing to, to work with some of our other areas as well. Yeah. So I don't know, I think that was my only question that I have. I don't know, Supervisor Simon, if you do? Go ahead.
I think some of the questions already brought up are, are good points. For years, we've been talking about, you know, cutting a tree down, and then three years later, having to come back and trim the same one. We're always talking about return on investment, and that just seems like an ongoing, you know, thing that we have happen here. Always too, I know this work needs to be done. I know PG&E is doing everything that they can to continue enhancing, as they said, the enhanced vegetation and management. But, you know, we have all had, in our districts, trees that were cut down by PG&E, you know, a few years ago, five years, four years, and then we get a call and say, hey, you know, I think in my area, it was the Noble Ranch area, had a bunch of trees and stuff. I think that area was somewhat addressed. I hadn't heard from the new HOA recently. But looking at it from an entire county perspective is always the best way. You know, at least for myself, I'm not asking PG&E to fix what's going on in the forests, just what's in the communities and affecting our constituents, you know, right on their properties or along their property lines. And as we move forward with that, just knowing that at least we could have those conversations is real important. I'm hearing what you're saying today, as far as the Cobb area, we would like to have it opened up. I know some folks in Riviera are going to talk about that. And, you know, having PG&E's ear to at least be open to any other situations, because I'm on board also with the Riviera area. I know we got a lot around the county that needs to be done, but that is one of our, you know, targeted areas that we look at, you know, where is the most vulnerable situation if something happens, and that is in that area right now. That's why we have the home hardening program. You know, we're not asking, you know, everybody, well, we're asking everybody to do their part. We're not just saying, hey, PG&E, you gotta do all of that. We're, we're trying to do stuff proactively from the county side. We just need that conversation and to be open to keep having those things. And, you know, Richard, it'd be great, you know, you've probably been out there a bunch, but at least to go out there and look at it. I know some tours would probably be offered in the area to go look. And, you know, these are hard conversations. I know there's undergrounding happening in Lake County, can't say enough for that. I know over the next few years, a lot of that's going on. But these are continuing conversations and calls that we get as supervisors. And let's hope the rain comes early this year, but we still got to get that fuel off the ground and be moving forward. So I don't think there's a simple solution today, and I don't think you guys have the authority to say, okay, yeah, we'll do the whole county. But we need to have that message taken back, that it's open for those conversations to continue for Lake County, and, you know, hopefully improve every year as we're moving forward. So hopefully, as we're doing it, removing the trees, the enhanced vegetation, the undergrounding, it's all going to be a part of that long-term success here for PG&E and Lake County, you know, at least on that front for our utility. You know, for me, vegetation abatement, and those types, there's one line that I bring up every conversation I have with PG&E, that's the 1103 line. I'm pretty sure I got that one right. I think I bring it up with you too, Melinda, every time, to the backside of Hidden Valley. That's a very important and sensitive one, and goes out quite a bit, whether it's PSPS, whether it's the trips that happen, or anything else. It seems like almost every year, the past five years, we've been standing under that line, and getting something figured out for that, I think, is real important for one of the largest communities in my area. But taking on that whole aspect, you know, I just, I want to support my District Five Supervisor over there and say, yeah, the Riviera is real important to us. So other than that, that's, that's all I have, and, you know, have some more conversation after the community gets their opportunity.
Very good, thank you.
So you want, we want to invite?
I think we can open it up to public.
Yeah, I'll open it up to public, and if you want to come up, sir, and...
Good afternoon. My name is Phil Hartley. I'm President of the Board of Directors for Riviera West Homeowners Association, and I also, it's my pleasure to serve on the Board of our newly-formed Canucktai Fire Safe Council as well. I've been in this position for probably too many years. But about four years ago, we really began to notice in our community an increase in the number, than the tree mortality. This was something that began, and now it's grown, and the county has recently responded to it with its emergency notification. So in early 2018, one of the things we noticed was that with increased PG&E activity in our community, there was the leftovers. So then this all comes down to really a single corporate policy on the part of PG&E, which is, or which was in 2018, we will leave everything greater than four inches in diameter on the ground, and they leave. The responsibility for that then becomes the individual property owners, because in an HOA, you can't have hazardous material piled up on the ground. It's a tremendous fire hazard, something has to be done with it. So in 2008, early 2008, I began some conversations with the local vegetation program managers for PG&E. These were initially positive and cooperative conversations about the problem. I said, I understood that, well, way out in the dingos, you know, out there on a 20-acre ranch or something, leaving wood behind is probably no, no big deal, and they probably even want to use the wood, you know, although fireplaces are now against the law, and no one in our community uses firewood. But I understood that. But in a community where the average lot size is like 70 to 90 feet, any one tree or any one pile of hazardous material instantly threatens houses on all sides. It's, it's just, there's no room there for, for error. We wanted to do our part. I was, at about the same time I was talking with the managers up in Willets, managed to get a grant to try to clear some, some of this stuff away. I agree with Mr. Simon. We all have to do our part, and from the beginning, we've always said, we want to cooperate. Is there something we can work out here? How can we help? How can we help you identify trees? How can, you know, notify owners? Anything you need, we're ready to do it. So we got a grant, and we hired some workers and some volunteer help, and I gave you a little packet of information, the first picture of which in shows that on that, on that day, that week, we took out two and a half tons, two and a half tons of debris, just tree debris. Yeah, that's, yes.
Was that on one lot?
No, no, this was six lots.
That's a lot of material.
It was a lot of material. No, you understand that what, what we see is, PG&E comes in, they'll take down a tree, they'll take away the limbs and the kind of needles and stuff, and there's a nice, neat, nice, neat potential bonfire, you know, of everything above four inches, and that's the issue. So in early 2008, then, I had conversations with the manager. As I said, they're very, very cooperative and very helpful. I gave them the information that they needed to have to, to talk about this issue, and I received a communication from PG&E on July 11, 2018. It says, basically, I know we'll have a tree contractor out there Monday to clean up the remaining wood that is less than 10 inches. And of course, I went yahoo. Okay, great, we've got an agreement, we're all fixed, we got a cooperative agreement with PG&E, and we're off to the races. Well, to make a long story short, that contractor never showed up, nothing ever happened. So long about August of that month, I contacted the tree manager and said, hello, do you still work for PG&E? And here's the problem, and now it's building back up again, and so forth and so on, and gave him the information, those are all in your packet, documented in your packet. The manager's response was, I am still with PG&E, but my areas of responsibility has shifted. I will forward your email over to the correct individual to follow up. Guess what? All right, no, no follow-up. In October of that year, 2000, and not, we waited until October 19, 2019, about six, seven, eight months of waiting for all this to happen, and I, again, communicated with the new manager. His response was, okay, I'll forward this information to my supervisor. And so we waited a little longer, bring us up to about the, in 2019, you know, we sent them the list of the addresses where there were current piles of stuff that hadn't been taken away. We got another bright piece of hope when this, we now move into 2020, nothing's, nothing's happened. When PG&E announced their new enhanced program, we thought, well, hey, maybe there's something here. The notices they began tagging on people's property said, if you have trees on your property that were previously marked, we will work with you to discuss any change. Let's see, oh, we will be removing wood as part of this work. If you would like to keep the wood, please let us know as soon as possible at the number above. Okay? So we went, oh, okay. So the default is they're going to take away the wood. That's what the notice says, and if you want to keep the wood, you have to call up and say, I want to keep my wood. Okay? Well, guess what? That didn't happen. No one called, by the way, to keep their wood. We still kept getting complaints because people wanted the wood taken away. For our citizens, these leftover wood piles are, in their view, a hazardous, costly potentially, because eventually the HOA makes them haul it away, thousands of dollars, by the way. Nuisance, incredible nuisance. Then, so I began trying, I thought, well, better move up the scale a little here, start talking to Sacramento. I began talking, having conversations with the people in Sacramento. They said, well, you know, we'd sure like to help out, but, but we get sued if we take the, the wood away, because people accuse us of stealing, you know, their wood. And so I went, oh, hey, we can help you out, we're an HOA. There are CCNRs, and everybody signed up. I gave them the legal references to our powers. See, we can tell an owner, you don't have to get an owner's permission to take something off of one of our properties, the HOA doesn't, because they, they agreed in the CCNRs. We offered PG&E then to provide, you know, under the enhanced program, permissions to take away the wood from any property they identify that they were going to act on. We even printed up the forms, everybody, we're gonna, we give them the forms to PG&E, filled out the forms, that's right. And so that kind of brings us up to today. So that's, and then finally, in early this year, I did file a formal case, formal complaint with PG&E. They responded to the complaint by sending out a foreman from one of the contractor groups, Loggers Unlimited, which, by the way, do great, great, great work. Watch a lot of contractors work, they do great work. And they're, the person who came out was very appreciative of the point of view we were trying to make. He understood that leaving, you know, wood behind, that's between four and 10 inches creates a fire hazard, but his contract wouldn't, will not allow him to take away the wood, because he wasn't contracted with PG&E, you know, to do so. And so my case was dismissed, or they said my case was settled because my, our case, Riviera West's case was settled because somebody came out and told us they weren't going to take away the wood. So today, as we, I stand before you, June, PG&E has gone back to its more traditional notification. You have a copy there in your, in your packet, and it just explicitly says, anything over four inches is your responsibility, we're not taking it away. And they notify owners largely by tacking up these notices to something on their property, which is kind of cute, because I know it's probably required, but the notice lasts about two to three days, you know, with our wind and, and, you know, and the lady who owns the property lives in Indonesia, so she doesn't drive by very often to see her property. So right now, we're at a situation where the owners don't know what's, what's happening. No permissions are, are being, you know, asked of them in one way or the other, and the note, whatever notices is being posted, I'll end with this.
Yes.
And this is the issue for Riviera West. Wood or wood debris is generated from vegetation management work legally belongs to the property owner as a service to our customers. PG&E will chip wood debris less than four inches in diameter, when accessible, which will be spread on the site to CAL FIRE standards or hauled away. So that's the reality of today. PG&E comes in, selects a, selects a tree. We wish they would do that with our cooperation. Just two months, two months ago, one of our property owners walked out, looked on his property, and there was a crew there, the Timbers Unlimited crew, kind of looking around, and what are you doing here? Well, we're here to take down a tree. Well, no, I took, I took, the owner had already taken the tree down a couple of months, a couple of months before, because there's no coordination, you see, and so we keep spending money, both outfits.
All right.
But that's...
Thank you for, thank you for that. I think it's Mr. Noonan had to step out. We think, we've been notified that there's a fire over here on Hendricks, and so just letting you know that that's taking place, that's why he stepped out, and just giving that insight, probably need to figure out what's going on there with that. But I didn't know if there's anyone else that wanted to speak, ma'am? And if we could keep it brief, I think we got, and then you can go afterwards. But go ahead, ma'am, come on up.
Thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Kathy Andre, and I serve as President of the Riviera Heights Homeowners Association, as well as the President of the Canucktai Fire Safe Council. Our area is part of the Sota Bay Corridor, and is, as Supervisor Pyska noted, is one of the most dangerous, most densely populated areas in Lake County, and it has yet to burn. We are, I would first of all, like very much to invite PG&E to come out, and I will personally take you on a tour of this area and show you exactly what's going on, because I think there's a disconnect between what you, PG&E might believe is going on and what is actually happening in our areas. And this is a real concern to me, and I'm very appreciative that you're here today. I'm very appreciative that the Board of Supervisors has brought this forward as a public comment and topic. In Riviera Heights, we have, I'm working with probably four or five different homeowners right now, whose properties have been damaged, almost massacred by PG&E, if I could put it that way. So one property had nine trees removed by PG&E. We asked those trees to be removed. They were dead trees, dead 130-foot trees that were in danger of houses and everything else on this vacant lot, next to this vacant lot. PG&E came down, and they cut the trees down. It, it took a while to get them there, but they did. They cut nine of these large trees down, and they left a pile. They weren't organized, they weren't lined up, they were piled on top of each other, and nothing was chipped. All the branches were left, absolutely nothing was done, and it created a greater danger than what we had before, when the trees were still standing. This is totally unacceptable. And in addition to that, I had to call Travis May, who I would like to thank Travis, and I think he's very brave and does a great job in returning our calls and dealing with us, because he's the guy we call and go, Travis, it's been a month, the, the brush is still on the ground, the trees are still on the ground, how are we going to resolve this? The owner of that particular property with nine dead trees, just for the sake of conversation, is looking about conservatively $1,000 a tree to have those trunks removed. $9,000, because PG&E came in, luckily cut the trees down, but they left all of these trunks. There's another owner on Edgewood, whose property just had two large dead pine trees downed, and not only did PG&E down them, which was great, they left the trunks, they left all the brush. It has been over three weeks since PG&E dropped these trees, and again, we have more of a serious fire danger than when the trees were standing. Again, this just, there is a disconnect, as I said, with what I think, believe is happening and with what we're experiencing. The amount of money that, that this, cutting down these trees is costing our homeowners is extravagant. You're looking at thousands and thousands of dollars that we are asking our homeowners to pay for when they shouldn't have to. This is PG&E's responsibility, it is not the homeowner's responsibility. In addition to that, when you're talking about these trees being topped and they're just fine, they're not. These trees have been, we've had, I think, we had seven trees in a row on our Main Street, Riviera Heights Drive, that were topped, probably half of them were already dead, and they were topped anyway. They weren't cut down and removed by PG&E because they were dead. No, they were topped, and that, it just kept spreading the beetle infestation to the other trees that were there, that PG&E also topped, weakened the trees... that were there that PG&E also topped, weakened the trees. And then they were consumed by the beetle infestation and disease. And then those trees died. So we had a whole lovely row of dead pine trees that were topped. The other trees that we have was where PG&E comes in and they, they're close to the wire.
Can we come to a?
Yep, okay. I think you get my drift. Please come out and look at us, look at what's really happening. Our very lives are endangered. Our ability to evacuate down Sota Bay Road with all of the trees that are there that are going to be cut down by PG&E and have already been cut down by PG&E endangers us all. And again, this is one of the most densely populated areas in all of Lake County that have yet to burn. Thank you very much and thank you for listening and I hope I see you out there.
And could, could we connect after so I could get your contact information?
Absolutely. I brought pictures. What a surprise. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have one. Scott, Scott, I'll let you go ahead and go before we are next public input. Go ahead, Scott.
Great. Thank you. Melinda, nice to see you. Perhaps we can discuss this offline. I was encouraged to hear that you plan on resuming your wood collection. I'd like to respectfully request PG&E not leave debris in our county road right of ways. You're hearing from property owners and representatives of HOAs that have concerns and we, we, as a department of public works, also have concerns about materials being left in the, in the road right of way. We've received a number of calls and you and I have had some conversations about, you know, complaints that we've received and a plan to have that material picked up. Again, just want to voice a concern that I'd really like to not see those materials left in the county road right of way. So perhaps we can work on that together offline, but I did want to share that, share that point.
Did you want to come up still, Joan?
I'm Joan Moss. I live on Wildcat Road. It's hard not to cry when I drive up and down Wildcat Road. Everybody has a story on Cobb Mountain. And I love trees. That's why I live there. I have a letter from Mendocino County that I got copied. And PG&E says they've already answered the letter, but the letter brings some very interesting things. Could you pass this to the supervisors? I appreciate Jessica Pyska for saying what she's saying today. I didn't know where to send my complaints. I, I called Vegetation Management. She said, you're the first complaint we've gotten. We're going to send a representative out to you. I never heard back. A friend of mine who lives in La Cloman had a dead and dying tree. And PG&E said, we'll cut it down for you. But if it's in a safe place, we will not remove it. She had it removed by PG&E. It took her $4,000 to remove that tree that she had to spend personally. Mr. Schutz, he told me about the one tree he was trying to save. A neighbor said, she might have been exaggerated, that PG&E cut down 700 trees on his property. I drove up there and he had big trunks laying on the ground between his house and the renter's house. This is on saddle. And it took one year before PG&E came and removed those trees. Meanwhile, they took down many more trees along Wildcat Road. I'm hoping to take pictures once I learn how to use my new movie camera. And it's, it's a tragedy. It's very sad. There is mobilization by neighbors who are unhappy with the complaint process and unhappy with Ms. Pica. Ms. Pyska, I'm not unhappy with her. We're all trying to find a solution to what is going on. There are piles of logs that have been there for two or three years. And now there's more piles of logs that have been there for, for just a one year. And as we feel, it's more of a, of a hazard than it was to start with. So the PG&E representative was very nice and taking notes and he's going to call me. And we need to know what our rights are and who to call and who to work with. I made friends with Loggers Unlimited. I showed them a story I wrote about a douchebag, another subject. And I have them promising not to cut my trees. They're my friends. But, but, but Loggers Unlimited almost, almost killed me. I had to jump up on a hill. And this vehicle was bigger than a UPS truck. And he was driving up Wildcat Road much faster than 25 miles per hour. But now they're all 25 miles per hour because I complained. And I will keep complaining. And Joe Schroeder complained to PG&E three times about his dead pine trees that border his wonderful pool where I swim. Jessica is there to swimming.
Joan, if you can start wrapping up.
I'm winding up. I, this fellow here got to talk over five minutes.
That's why I'm giving you your, you spoke about that long too. So please finish up. Okay.
That this fellow got PG&E to promise to cut down the poles, get good materials. If you read the letter to Mendocino, by Mendocino County Supervisors, they pointed out that the settlements where PG&E was found at fault, it wasn't the trees' fault. It was PG&E's poles and wires that were not up to code that caused the problems all throughout California. Thank you. I'm being scattered, but I hope we can all work together. One thing more. There is a law against, there is a law apparently that we cannot learn, but we have heard that whoever cuts a tree down gets more money. The contractors get paid extra for each tree they cut.
If we could please.
Thank you. I just had to say that one more thing. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone with public input? I don't see anyone in the chambers. Zoom, do you see hands up anywhere? Okay. If we'll go to Zoom. And so John, if you can unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, excellent. Thank you so much. My name is John Funke. I'm a Riviera Heights property owner. I want to thank PG&E and Supervisor Pyska for putting a meeting together. And just to highlight what I, my experience has been that, just like Kathy mentioned, is that while PG&E cuts down the trees, what they've left on my properties are just a tangled mess and don't chip branches. And I've called, I've sent emails just trying to get them to comply with their own regulation of chipping anything from four inches. Because right now what has happened is the actual downed trees on the property, in my opinion, have created a, a bigger fire hazard than just leaving the trees in place. And so I appreciate the new number that was given, the, the tree safety at PG&E.com. But, but I think there needs to be a heightened effort from PG&E simply to fulfill their obligation that they stated that they were going to do. And just to take care of the chipping, you know, do whatever it needs to be done and just fulfill their initial obligations before, and work with the homeowners directly. I just want to thank, thank the supervisor again for having this hearing because it, it's, it's a, it's a big light of hope that PG&E has been here. Hopefully PG&E hears this message and will take immediate action to correct it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we have another hand up. And if you can unmute and state your name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. This is Bart Levinson. This is the day after the anniversary of the Valley Fire. I lost my property in the Valley Fire and I now live in the Riviera. What we know about the Riviera is that the people talking to you today are trying to tell you and the supervisors are trying to tell you is we already know that we are designated as the highest, most densely, the highest risk, highest dense population area likely to burn if ignited in California. We don't want to be another paradise. But we're going to be another paradise if we can't keep reducing our fire risk. For PG&E to come here and make our fire risk worse is absolutely unconscionable, unacceptable, and it's on the level of you setting up another paradise. Not okay. Sorry to speak so emotionally, but 65% of our county has already burned. And this area where you're doing this, creating these new fire hazards, is already known as the highest fire danger area in the county and maybe in the state. We depend on one narrow, two-lane evacuation route. We'll all be pouring out onto it. And your piles of wood are endangering our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So is there any other hands up? I think that, okay, so we'll close public input and bring it back. Supervisor Pyska.
So when we started really addressing tree mortality in the county late last year, early this year, we formed the Tree Mortality Task Force, which PG&E is a part of and Melinda participates on a monthly basis. We're really appreciative for that. The amount of work that has to be done around the county is more than one agency can handle. And so the whole strategy with that task force is to divide up the work so that it gets done. And PG&E has been a great partner in that. I'm really appreciative of what's happened since then. There are some areas to improve and that is, you know, shortening that time between the tree work and the tree removal. Because I believe there are different contractors. And there has to be a way to, to have that happen much more quickly. Now, there are a ton of complaints. I get on a regular basis. They may not go through the official hotline, but I get them. I ask people to send them to me and then I send them directly to Melinda. And then typically they're handled quickly that way. And I, I do hear back from some constituents. Although this, you know, as other people have mentioned, this has been going on a long time and there are still lots of piles that have been around for years and years. So, you know, expanding the scope to the whole county is really going to be necessary. Our, our emergency is countywide and that needs to be recognized. It's not just one community. And shortening that timeframe between the pickup, or I'm sorry, the tree work and the pickup, that has to happen. And then there are just some other complaints that I get with the contractors and, you know, I, I think that I can give that to you offline, but just maybe a little more oversight with those subcontractors in the area to kind of clean things up. I know Joan talked about her speeding incident. She didn't get hurt, so that's good. And I think they're paying attention now on Wildcat Road. But, you know, there is this other side of the conversation about people not wanting their tree work done. And, you know, for, I always say, like, we, the reason why the trees are going around the power lines is because this work hasn't been done for a long time. And it is jarring to see that tree work being done if it hasn't been done to the standard it needs to be. And if you want to live in an area that has trees, there's tree work that has to happen. I live in an area where there are no trees because every single one of them burned and died. And I don't want anybody to have to live in an area like that. And so we have to be really mindful of the vegetation work that, that is necessary to protect our communities, to protect our homes and to protect your infrastructure. So I, I do appreciate you coming in here and giving us this news. That's really wonderful news. I think the scope does need to be expanded, as you've heard along this, you know, critically. And I, I know you're doing the, is it just the regular vegetation management? Because it's not the enhanced vegetation management along the, the Sota Bay Corridor? Is that, Melinda? Because it's not in the circle for the enhanced vegetation, the EVM. But I know they are serving that area and work has begun in the Sota Bay Corridor.
Supervisor Pyska, I'll follow up with our enhanced vegetation management team. See if I can get a better sense of where exactly we're going to be doing circuit miles in Lake County this year. I, I don't want to speak out of turn. If, if I can follow up with you.
Sure. And the science and data is telling us that this problem is not going away anytime soon. And it's going to be critical that we remain partners in this work and that all the other partners continue to do their job. Caltrans does their job. We're about to work on, on our county right of ways. We're about to launch that project. We do. And for your benefit, we've also applied for a grant to do our own vegetation management on the corridor. So we don't expect PG&E to do everything. We just have to work together. We have to have this partnership intact. We have to continue these conversations, but we really need you to continue with this.
Any other comments? I just, so some of these folks that have talked today and live in specific areas where they're having issues, they can email or call the number that you provided that says Trees, Safety, PG&E, that, and then the contact information there, they can directly call that number?
Correct.
Okay.
Can we just put that slide up one more time so everybody can see it?
Yeah, and thank you so much, Chair Crandall and Supervisor Pyska for having us here today and for showing that particular slide. And Supervisor Pyska, you and the other members of the County Board of Supervisors are so good about making sure that you forward the escalations on.
There we go.
And I just want to put in a pitch, please, wherever possible, call this number first or call this number as well. This is the number that you can get where you can actually get a case number assigned to you. So I just, I learned the hard way in another jurisdiction, in another county, a couple of weeks ago, that I don't, when it comes through me, I don't keep, I don't, I don't have access to a certain database where we can track everything. So this, this number is the one where people can actually get their case number assigned to them.
All right. And I'd just also like to encourage anyone that's listening or that's going to email, if it's in their respective district, CC the supervisor. That way we know, you know, just CC it so that that way we, we know as well. Because I know they do for you, so.
Oh, yes.
All right. So with that, I don't think there's any more comments or questions. I don't know if you had any finishing comments.
No, just to thank you again for having us. Appreciate it.
I had a couple of things.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Well, I want to apologize for having to step out. Part of what I do for PG&E is when there's a new fire start in my area, either Mendocino or Lake, I evaluate the location of the report of the start in relation to our assets, you know, be they distribution lines or transmission lines or gas. You don't have any natural gas here. And formulate and suggest a response from PG&E, be it one of our safety infrastructure protection team engines or a troubleman or whatever. The Hendricks fire in the Scotts Valley area, cross of East Road, was in a mode hayfield. Forward progress has been stopped at about three quarters of an acre, so no threat there. But I had to take that. I apologize for having to step out.
We, we seen it and we knew, we knew what you were stepping out for, so thank you for that. And Melinda, thank you again. And so if there's nothing else, I guess we'll close this item and we look forward to further progress on this and appreciate having the hard conversation. All right.
Thank you very much.
Great.
Thank you. And so as for the Board of Supervisors meeting, it looks like we've covered everything. And so we will come to the point as we need to adjourn. And we will definitely see you next week. Thank you again for tuning in with us and this meeting's adjourned.